As Mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the October 27, 2022 work session meeting for the Stanton City Council to order. The first item, on October 25, 2022, I received a request from Councillor Dole to participate remotely in the October 27, 2022 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask Councillor Dole to state the personal matter which makes it unable for her to attend tonight's meeting.
I am out of state.
All righty. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow Councillor Dole to remotely participate in the October 27, 2022 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oakes, I'll second that.
All right, we have a second by Councillor Amy Darby. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. I'll now ask Councillor Dole to state the remote location from which she is participating.
I am somewhere in Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina.
Okay. Could everyone on council as well as the audience here, Councillor Dole?
Yes.
Ready? Welcome. On October 25, 2022, I received a request from Councillor Mead to participate remotely in the October 27, 2022 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask Councillor Mead to state the personal matter which makes it unable for her to attend tonight's meeting.
I'm in Richmond.
All right. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Mead's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to the Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow Councillor Mead to remotely participate in the October 27, 2022 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oakes, I'll second.
All right. Councillor Amy Darby has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll now ask Councillor Mead to state the remote location from which she is participating.
3012 North Lake Drive, Henrico.
All right, could everyone on council as well as the audience here, Councillor Mead? Yes. Ready? Welcome. All right. The first item listed on the agenda is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Claffey.
I move that we accept the work session and regular meeting agenda as presented.
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Mayor Oakes, I'll second.
Councillor Darby is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That moves us on to item number two, a discussion of single-use plastic bag tax.
Ms. Darby, go ahead. This item is added at the request of Councilmember Carolyn Dole. Maggie Reagan, our Commissioner of Revenue, was also here to provide information on the plastic bag tax. I'd like to first invite Ms. Dole, if she'd like to make any introductory remarks before we turn it over to Ms. Reagan.
Sure. I requested this to be on the agenda because we've never come up with a good resolution for our recycling method that doesn't unfairly treat the elderly, disabled, people without vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, who are still paying for recycling but cannot participate. So I thought that one possibility would be looking at this single-use fee on plastic bags as a way to fund the additional expense to allow us to go back to curbside recycling. And so I'm also hoping that we can have someone from Shenandoah Green to talk about this as well. They have a lot of data on those kinds of things. But that's really the reason, just to introduce this as a concept, a way to have a win-win, will be helping reduce the use of plastic and also be helping to provide curbside recycling for a lot of people that are currently not able to participate. And that's it for me. So if Maggie wants to put some data out there, I think this is regarding to cities who have already implemented this.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Reagan.
And also I will mention that my location is such that I can either not turn the video on and hear everything, or, you know, it doesn't work. It won't work. It freezes up. So I won't have the video on tonight. Sorry.
All right.
Yeah, I remember that's the last time she downed Kill Devil. Well, now members of council, the majority of the information that I have to provide for you this evening is anecdotal. I have spoken with my counterparts in some of the localities, or most of the localities that have enacted the plastic bag text, which was authorized in the 2020 General Assembly session. And most of the localities did not adopt it until this year, so not a whole lot of information. But what I can tell you is that the, so the tax is a five cent per bag, and it is, it is on plastic bags for grocery stores, convenience stores, and drugstores. And it's a five cent tax. Three cents goes to the state and to the Department of Taxation, and two cents is kept by the dealer or the retailer. That will change on January 1 of 2023 to four cents and one cent. That, those revenues are going into the Department of Taxation, and they are disseminating their revenue from, to the different localities that so far have the tax adopted by ordinance. And I asked basically what, to try and get an idea of what the revenues were. The, the purpose of the tax is to encourage people to use their own reusable bags. And so the theory is that the amount of tax collected would decline over time. But the benchmark that the group I spoke with said that they were all using as expected revenues was $20,000 a year. So that's, there's not a lot of historical data to get at this point. I spoke with the Department of Taxation regarding the uses of revenue. There, there's a fairly broad explanation of purposes that you can use for the tax for. All of the people that I spoke with are either have not found a use for the tax yet or are using it to purchase reusable bags to provide to SNAP and WIC participants, which is one of the allowed uses. And that is really about all that I was able to find out. The, the tax, the Department of Taxation is, is passing through 100% of that revenue right now, but the more localities that come on and start collecting, they will not do that forever. They're going to start charging an administrative fee. So you'll have the part the dealer keeps, then you'll have an administrative fee from the Department of Taxation, I suspect, at some point. And, and then the remainder of the revenue will come back to the localities. So that's really all I have, all I was able to find out at this point. And unless anybody has any questions, I can hopefully answer.
Maybe.
Yes?
So did I understand you said the average is $20,000?
That's, that's the benchmark that these, that I talked to, they're using.
So.
As a rev, as, as what they expect, because the majority of them just put it in place in calendar 22.
So basically, you're saying, based on the other figures, four and one, you're looking at a standing, Stanton basically collecting $4,000?
No, they're talking about the amount of revenue they are collecting after the dealers and whatever, the revenue coming into the locality. So that was Roanoke, Charlottesville, Alphamorell, I think. There was a group that I, that I talked to, and they kind of just came up with this benchmark that everybody was using for now, because they just don't know what to expect.
Roanoke, Charlottesville, Lot B.
Right. Yeah.
How much was coming to the city? I'm sorry. What we would expect.
That's, the benchmark is that they're talking about is $20,000 a year. And, and some of, obviously, you know, you're Loudoun County, Arlington, and that's going to be more because they're much larger localities. But they also have a very higher, a much higher incidence of use of reusable bags.
What percent of the state is participating in this program?
I think there were, there are either eight or 11 localities. I can't remember. I think it was 11, and I contacted eight.
I believe it's 11.
Right.
I checked today.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes, Maggie, do you know how successful these, the replacement of single-use bags with reusable bags is in these localities? I know Arlington has had this in place for more than a year. I believe the District of Columbia has also had a reuse of, or a single-use bag fee in place, and, and that's been for more than a year. Of course, the district doesn't, doesn't come under Virginia law, but you know how successful these efforts are to replace single-use bags?
To be honest, I really don't, and I didn't get information from the Northern Virginia localities because their, their tax is not being administered in, through their Commissioner of Revenue. So I didn't, they didn't really have a lot of information for me. I, I think it's just that, you know, again, most of the information that I have is pretty anecdotal in this need. I mean, I can tell you myself, the times that I've visited family in Arlington and gone in the grocery store, if you're not using reusable bags, you get, you know, you get some dirty looks. So I don't really know, you know, what the incidence of it is, but I, I do know that most of the people I talked with said that they expected to, to the, the revenue to decline over the years because the purpose of the program is to incentivize people to use their own bags.
And that makes a lot of sense to me, obviously. If, success is really not how much revenue you're generating from the program, but success is reduction of.
Right.
Single-use bags. These, we, we are so fortunate here in Stanton to be within very few miles of the source of our clean water. And, and so the, you know, we, we hear about micro particles of plastic in the ocean, the fish are eating them, their animals are drinking water that contain these plastics. We're drinking water that contains these plastics. And, and there's going to come a time, and I don't think it's going to be all that far along, when we're all going to have a lump of plastic in our, in our system somewhere. And, you know, I, I don't mean to, to hyperbolize, but we, we have a responsibility to pass clean water on from the city of Stanton to the, to the folks who are down river from us, the communities, farmers, the, the, the fish in the ocean, the, the animals that we're all eating. And, and it seems to me that, that it's a truly progressive notion to, to put a fee on a single-use plastic bags to encourage people to, to begin to think about reusable bags. And, and, and so I am very much in favor of the city implementing a single-use bag fee. I think it's our, we have a responsibility to the environment to begin doing this in every locality.
I think too, that a lot of the businesses would rather have people bring their own bags because plastic bags, to me as a businessperson, have gone up about 30% just this year. And, and a lot of it's to do with oil, a lot of it's to do with supply. So, I mean, any way that you could, I think they would be in favor of. I don't think it would hurt their business. You know, you might get a few disgruntled people, but I think it would be a good thing.
There are national grocery chains who are making this change. They're beginning to implement this nationwide. And, and so, you know, we have the opportunity to implement a bag fee. We can cover the cost of reusable bags that might be incurred by individuals who currently are not using single-use bags. And I think I totally support providing reusable bags to people who participate in, in SNAP and WIC programs, because I want to make sure that we don't, we don't put a burden on folks who can't afford these. But, but we also have to think about the, really, the enormous, the enormous cost of single-use bags to our environment. So I really, I really can't tell you how much, how important I think this is.
Well, this is Carolyn Dole. I will say that there was a, a session at the VML conference that I attended on recycling, which was fascinating. Winchester, for example, does, still continues to do curbside recycling. They had somebody there from Bridgewater, and they are collecting plastic because they found a vendor, because prices on, on recyclables have increased. And so, because I guess it's the problem with, with not having any recyclables is people that use those are can't, are not be able to get them now to use in, in remanufacturing. So I, I think it's dreadful what we've done to people who don't have cars, people who don't have transportation, who work a shift that doesn't coincide with whatever hours the recycling center is open, the elderly, the disabled, who want to participate in recycling. And we, we're not allowing that to happen. And so I just thought, looking at this fee for single-use plastic bags was a win-win because you can, you can also reduce the, the initial use of plastic, which is the ideal thing. And I have learned that we, each of us consume a credit card worth of plastic a month. Everybody in the, in the United States. So we're already doing that. And at what point do we, do we wake up and say, you know, well, maybe this is why people are having other medical issues that are unexplained? I mean, if you get enough plastic in your system, it cannot be healthy for you. So I would encourage everyone, and I'm sure, like, if we can get a representative from Shenandoah Green to present maybe at the next work session, I'm sure they have some valuable information on this. So I would like for everyone to consider it. It's not an unreasonable fee. Other cities are doing it. And in fact, I already know Kroger's and Martin's both are going to be eliminating them in 2025, I want to say. So it's pretty close. And, you know, this is just something we can do that's good for our citizens.
And they'll still have the paper bags available.
Correct.
And Ms. Reagan, I apologize. I neglected to be specific that, that so far, the, the way the, the law reads is that there are specific uses for the revenues that, that, and the way it reads is for purpose of environmental cleanup, providing education programs designed to reduce environmental waste, mitigating pollution, and litter, or providing reusable bags to recipients, recipients of SNAP or WIC. And I will say that when I spoke with the Department of Taxation, I specifically asked them if the revenues from this program were available to support recycling programs. They said they were unable to provide me with that answer, and that they are currently in the process of drawing up further guidelines for this tax at the request of the General Assembly members. So I think there's more to come on this, is all I wanted to add.
So, right now, there's 20,000 a year benchmark, four cents to the locality, one cent to the dealer, and that.
Which would indicate that, that it would go to 25,000 once that shift is changed. But again, it's expected to decline over time.
Right.
You said.
It's going to decline. Hang on a second. I'm, Terry, I'm still talking. So the breakdown of it can very well change because an administration fee.
It, it, I would expect that eventually, the Department of Taxation doesn't generally do anything without some sort of administration fee.
Right, exactly. And Leslie, so what about for the recycling, the curbside recycling? How much are we looking at bringing that back?
So when we were going over these costs, when we were in the middle of the FY23 budget discussions, there were different options we provided. One was curbside recycling and not including plastic. So because we're, don't have the ability to really recycle plastic curbside, that's $323,000. To have a curbside collection that includes a recycling center that can recycle plastics, for instance, is about $434,000. Sorry, that's with, that's with the recycling center, and then curbside collection with plastic is $385,000. So it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to return to curbside in some way, shape, or form. And we would have to figure out, you know, what could be collected curbside versus what we would still need to do centrally, which I think was plastics and cardboard.
Plastics.
Right. So that was the information we provided to council earlier this spring during the budget discussions. And a new truck, and that's not even included in these figures, correct?
We suspended truck replacement. If we got back from the curbside business, we would need to get into cyclic truck replacement, one new truck about every four years.
Did you have something?
I just thought, I just want to clarify something. You said locality, but you said the state would collect the tax, right?
They do. And then they would.
I didn't say the locality would send it.
No, I thought you said it would go to the locality.
The, the, well, the four cents would be distributed to the locality, and then the one cent, and then that makeup would change.
So right now, it's three and two would go to.
Administrative.
One. But, but I would expect an administrative fee at some point in the future.
I know. I hope that, that phone would pay for rehab for my cat, because she licks the bags, like, she's going to be upset.
So Ms. Reagan, you mentioned the need for a new curbside recycling deal.
We start, if we start hitting every driveway in town again, we'll start, and putting the miles back on those vehicles, we'll need to get back into the, over standard replacements.
Only four or five more employees on top of that, too, right?
That was the other issue, was labor.
So even with the money, we have to turn that money into two new drivers, two or three new loaders, which has always proven to be a challenge.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one aspect of, on a more localized level, though we're certainly not Charlottesville, but take a look at their city council webpage, their agenda. On the October 17 agenda for Charlottesville, they had a $20,000 appropriation for reusable bag distribution. So, yeah, not getting into the policy merits of this, but in terms of financial benefits or the financial impact, it is important, if the council wants to try to make that outreach effort, to go to all the SNAP households within the city of Stanton, at least in Charlottesville, they're appropriating $20,000 for this.
And the representative that I spoke with from Charlottesville said that that $20,000 was the city's portion, that they were partnering with another agency that was also going to be putting funds in, and they were going to, they were going to work together in tandem because it was more of a, more of a social services type organization that had the information and the access to the clientele.
I, yeah. I reckon I would say this. I applaud what Carolyn is saying, the idea of, you know, the, trying to block the plastic getting back into, you know, all of this area and us consuming, that would be great. I would love to see the city maybe make an outreach to, to the grocery stores, even to the pharmacies, hey, see if you can go a different route, get rid of the plastic bags if you can. If, the idea of maybe the city of Stanton maybe putting in their budget, something that maybe we can try to do these reusable bags. But I tell you right now, this councillor would not be willing to vote aye on instituting right now at this time, instituting any kind of further fee or tax on the general public. That's just right, not with the way the economy's going right now. I mean, I know it's small, but it's like a nickel and dime, and I just, I'm all for the idea of trying to get rid of the plastics. I think it's great. And if the city can somehow come up with, you know, putting 15, $20,000 into our budget to try to maybe get some of these reusable bags out to the pharmacies and the, and the grocery stores and that kind of thing, great. I'm just, as a matter of principle, I'm not willing to say aye, yeah, I'm going to put another fee or another, some, you know, something else onto the citizens. I, I just can't see it right now, not with the way the economy's going.
So do I hear you correctly, Mr. Robertson, that you're committing the city to come up with 15 to 20,000 dollars for my bags?
I didn't say that, Ms. Mead.
Okay, I just want to be clear. You were saying you hope or you wish the city could, and we are the city. We, the city is sitting right here. The people who make that decision are sitting in this room.
I understand that.
So, so, so we, and, and, and it's always easier to do it later. We can do it later. And, and so the ocean rises, our food is poisoned, our water is poisoned, and at one point, or I, you, you don't have children, Mr. Robertson, I know you have a nephew, but those of us who have children and whose children have children and who want to see our families, generations of people in this country eat healthy food and drink clean water, it just, it's a small place to start, a teeny tiny, small place to start, and a nickel a bag is avoidable. Somebody walks into a grocery store or a drugstore and learns that they're going to, they're going to have to pay a five cent fee for a bag or, or, or begin using reusable bags if you give the opportunity at that point in time to just purchase, purchase a bag or be given one if they're a WIC or, or, or SNAP consumer. We have to start somewhere, Mark. We can't just kick, this is, this is a can that just won't kick anymore.
Okay, I'm going to stop right there.
Of course you are.
Because, well, first off, we need to remember, this is being tied in to bringing back the curbside recycling. And the money towards curbside recycling that we would hope would be able to be generated by this new tax that's being proposed. And so right now, there does need to be more discussion on this matter, especially since it is 544 and we are past time for our tourism update.
I, I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure that we're clear, though, that Carolyn's suggestion of tying it to the recycling program, it is not, it is not the only purpose for this, this bag fee. So to conflate those two things is an error.
That's the way it was presented.
No, it was presented by Carolyn as being a possibility. This group gets to decide that.
Absolutely.
Not Carolyn.
Ms. Mead, we're gonna move on because we're out of time. We're moving on.
This is Carolyn Dole. If I could add one more statement. If we don't get a fix to where we make recycling available for everybody, every citizen in the city, somebody's gonna sue us because we're making them pay for recycling for a service that they, that doesn't work for people. They go and it's closed, or they can't get there because they don't have a car, or for various reasons. But we don't let them opt out of paying that fee. So either we need to fix it that way, or we need to go back and do curbside recycling right. And it's not like nobody's doing curbside recycling. I've heard them talk about it at the VML conference, and they're doing it very successfully. And so, and then we don't need a truck right now. We've got a good truck. He's only talking about throwing that money in as a, as a reserve for replacement. So I just want to make sure everybody understood that, that's all.
All right, so we do need to move on. This is a conversation that will continue concerning the tax on plastic bags that's mandated, as well as the recycling and the connection between the two. So, we need to move on to the tourism. So at this time, thank you, Ms. Reagan. We appreciate your information. And item three is the tourism update. Ms. Bovrigard?
Cheryl Eck, our tourism director, will give us an update on the Department activities of the tax.
Leslie, and thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. It's been a while since I've been in front of you to talk. And last time, I think we talked about the pandemic mostly. So, just want to let you know, we have good news today. So, first of all, I always like to start with our mission. I realized this a long time ago, that people confuse what we do with maybe economic development or parks and recreation. But what we do is we promote the city of Stanton. We enhance the city of Stanton's brand. And our department was created in nineteen eighty-nine. Our budget this year was six hundred and sixteen thousand, which is the biggest it's ever been. So thank you all very much for that. And of course, it's from the Lodging, Tax and General Fund. And quickly, I just wanted to go over staff because our staff has changed. Jessica Williams is here, the cute redhead over here. She is our new marketing manager now. I'm not new, she's been here for a year and a half now. But I don't know if everybody has met her yet. But we make an amazing team. And then, I also wanted to note, we have two new travel counselors, Nancy Artley and Seela Sprinkle. So you know about our attractions, downtown Stanton, the American Shakespeare Center, Frontier Culture Museum, Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library. All of those attractions are really supported through our, our other businesses, like hotels, restaurants, bed and breakfasts, independent retailers. We have two breweries now, at the end of this month, it'll be two. But a cider and a winery. And now we have a hundred and nineteen Airbnb's, according to Airbnb. That's quite a bit. I looked at, last time I presented, I think we had seventy-one. So, we've got quite a few more. So, tourism is an instant revenue generator. We can do a promotion, and I'm gonna give you an example of that, and sell out an attraction in four days. So, as you can see, these numbers just came out for 2021. Our employment is climbing back up there. We're not to two thousand and nineteen levels. Tourism expenditures, we're almost at two thousand and nineteen levels, which is amazing. Up thirty-five percent from last year. This is a Smith Travel Research Report that I get, and this is hotel occupancy. So it gives me a really good idea of how we're doing. So if you can look at the occupancy for the first line there, if it's anything over sixty percent, that's we are in season. So April, May, June, July, August, and September, high season, and that will continue October and November. We don't have those numbers yet, of course. And then if you look down at the bottom, revenue, this is just hotel revenue. And so far, twenty-six million in hotel revenue. So I, it will definitely be over thirty million for this year, that our hotels are, are making off of tourism. Also, we're back. Attractions are all open, events, and these are the ones that I, that I heard from. Hyphens, they've always had, you know, they did virtual one year, but they, they were back in 2021. So they were up six percent this year. Happy Birthday America reported twenty-five thousand people attending for those events. The Frontier Culture Museum is up a hundred and seventy percent. And you can, you know, school trips are back, field trips are back. So that really is their numbers. Woodrow Wilson is up fifteen and a half. The American Shakespeare Center up forty-three percent. Stanton Music Festival up a hundred and ten percent. These are the ones that I heard. So, what's new, I'm probably gonna miss a few, but I wanted to, you know, just give you some highlights. Remedy Burger is so delicious. Sweet Agnes. Brisket Taco, which they haven't opened their bricks and mortar yet, but I think that's coming soon. They had originally said October. We're getting close to then, but they, they also have a food truck, and they do catering. Borough and Vine is a cute new store downtown. Moreno's is back open. Go in there tonight.
Your favorite place, Steve.
Yeah. And then Accordia. And so this is the owner of Bear Ridge Vineyard. It's Robert Higgs, it's John Higgs' son, and his wife have opened this little shop. Chocolate, it's really cute. And of course, the big one, Virginia Railway. They started October, August fourth. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. We launched our new website. This is something I've been wanting for the past four years. We had COVID, then we had, you know, some staff changes. So it finally launched last week. So I hope you'll take a look at it, visitstand.com. We're using an ad agency, Madden Media. And so they started working for us in February. And then, so they did our, our website, and now they're doing all of our digital marketing. E-Newsletter is our Stanton on tap. I hope you get that weekly. If you don't sign up, but our signups have increased by ten percent. Visitor back request increased by fifty percent. This is our new creative. And these are the places where you might see it in print anyway. So Virginia Living Magazine, Richmond Magazine, Blue Ridge Outdoors, Preservation, Northern Virginia Magazine. And then we do some radio all year long on WNRN. We do Charlottesville, our area, you know, and Richmond. And then this summer, we did some radio with NPR. So this is from Madden Media. You have all of the details that you can look through on that. I'm just gonna highlight a few things. And like I said, they're a digital company. So, they started doing our digital advertising in April, and our website visits have gone up a hundred and two percent since they've been our agency. Page views have gone up ninety-two percent. And you see that the graph there in July, that was actually our team, Jessica. She did a Facebook and Instagram post on July twenty-second about the railway, and it went viral.
Real.
Yes. So these are the things that they're doing for us. You know, new creative, they've increased our website traffic. They're reaching new audiences for us. We consider an engaged audience is one that spends, you know, a little more time on your website. A converted visitor is someone that, you know, asks for a visitor's guide or they sign up for our newsletter. Usually, for, you know, private visitors, it would be they purchase something, but we don't have anything to sell. Again, I want you to look through this, and it's a lot of, you know, ad agency speak, but SEM is search engine marketing. So you can see an example of those on the right. So, and then RLSA is retargeting. So that is stalking. So if you've been to our website before, we might show you an ad on Google. Google Display, this has been kind of new to me. So, this is what our Google Display ads have looked like over this past year. The examples of those, five point eight million impressions, fifty-six thousand click-throughs. Facebook and Instagram. So, the one on the bottom left, that's one of our static ads. And then on the right, that's a carousel ad. So, you know, you can look through the photos and they all, both of those have done really well. Then we have some ads for our history audience, static ads in the carousel. And then outdoor recreation, this was more this summer, and music, when we had a lot of live music going on, like Blackburn Inn and Stanton's Festival. And this is new. This is something I think a lot, we've shied away from, but I think we need to embrace it, and our agency thinks the same. And so, we just started a campaign called Haunted Stanton. And it is doing so well. And the thing is, Stanton is actually considered the most haunted place in Virginia. So, I think it's time to embrace that fun. And the ghost tours are really happy with us. And this is kind of fun, that, you know, the phrases that we're targeting, you know, haunted places in America, a nightmare on Elm Street, these are the things that people are looking for. They're gonna see our ad. We're also doing some digital billboards in Philadelphia and Washington DC. We have twenty-seven of these. And that was September through November. So these are just branding ads. We want people to know Stanton, see a great photo of it. And here's that viral Facebook post that Jessica did. So this went July twenty-second, I was on vacation. And they launched on August fourth. And for some reason, people just called our office to try and book, and they still do, still call our office to try and book a train ticket. So, it's, it's doing well. I know we've been looking for something like that for a long time, and I'm just so glad that it's finally here. But they sold out four days after they launched. And we have gotten into TikTok now. So, we gotta get on that trend, Visit Stanton BA. So, we are on TikTok, so please like us. And this is, we, this is a haunted Stanton ad, and it's gotten seventy-six thousand views so far. So, yeah. And I just want to brag on Jessica a little bit, because this is a lot of industry speak here. So I'm just, I don't need to tell you all about localhood. It's through this platform we use called CrowdRiff, where you can make stories. And stories would be on Instagram, they would be on TikTok, they would be on Google. And we were asked to be a beta for the Virginia Tourism Corporation. And they, and so CrowdRiff, which is an international company, actually wrote an article about Jessica and how well we have done with that program, about anybody else in the state. So, yeah. So I just wanted to brag on her a little bit. And then, so I was talking to a group today, you know, then we started, when I started here in Stanton in two thousand and seven, when you don't have a ton of money, you know, you spend it on great photography, video, and public relations, because advertising is expensive. And so, we have done that since day one, and we still do. But now we have some more money for advertising. But these were just a few of my favorites for the past two years. And, you know, HGTV and Southern Living, Oprah, USA Today. We keep a list on our website. And I try to send it to Leslie to send out to you guys when we get something like that.
It's beautiful and the most haunted.
The most haunted. We are. Not a bad place to be. So what's next? We got a little bit of ARPA money from Virginia Tourism Corporation. Not as much as our, you know, other folks around us. We got sixty thousand. Whereas I think Augusta County got like two hundred and forty thousand or something. So this is what our team has decided to use that for. So tourism market research, and I know the mayor and Eric Curran probably remember, we did a research project back in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen. So it was a long time ago, and, you know, they're expensive. It's, it was fifty thousand dollars, you know. But it told us, who is our visitor? How much money do they spend? Well, that's really out of date now, you know. So, and market research has changed. So it's all about data mining. So, there are a couple of companies. Our, our ad agency actually has a program called Madden Voyage, but there's also Sartaco. And it will track how much money. So they have agreements with credit card companies. So when someone spends money in Stanton, and it will also track their zip code, so you'll know where they came from. So, it's about, we will know more about our audience if we do some research like this. Now, this is about thirty-five thousand a year. So, we're gonna give it a try with our ARPA funds. And then our visitor center, again, mayor, you probably remember this as well. That was my first project in Stanton in two thousand and seven, was to create our visitor center. And it hasn't really changed since. We've gotten a few new, you know, rack displays and everything. And I think it's time to, you know, shush it up. Also, what's up is, and I really don't, I'm not a fan of this term, but influencers. So we have worked with this, this group called Stays and Getaways. Got some great TikTok and Instagram and blog from them. With Sunshine Soul, that's her on the bright with her dog, Sancho. She's currently in Stanton right now. And we're working with Augusta County and Wayne'sboro. She's very popular. So it's about dog currently travel. And the other one that we're talking to is Nomarama. And he is out of Fredericksburg. And it's more about food. So, and that's a great thing that we have here in Stanton. So that's immediately what's coming up.
Any questions?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dole. I don't mind Stanton being known as the most haunted place in Virginia. But is there any way to, to get some of these tour people to stop making up just really horrible things that aren't true at all? Because we, you know, some of our locations, people and their parents and grandparents work there. And, for example, the newest one was the fact that they said the Western State Power Plant was a crematorium where they burned all the dead bodies, just flat, not true. they said the, the Western State Power Plant was a crematorium where they burned all the dead bodies, just flat, not true. So I don't mind them making up little stories about this and that and the other, but it, it, it upsets some of our citizens. So, you know, is there anything we can do to help that?
Do you know who's doing that? Because I, that's not part of the messaging that we are.
Well, it's evidently whoever, I don't know how many of these ghost tours and all, but it's some, it's at least one of those. I don't know which one, cause I, you know, I don't do it, but just reading people talking about it on social media. You know, it creates some problems, you know, for people who are offended. I mean, because it's not true. I mean, you can say there's a cemetery up there. I mean, you can, all of that stuff is true. But there evidently somebody is making it up.
We will always try to make sure that our messaging is true. And if I see anything like that, I'll definitely reach out to them. Cause I haven't seen that yet, but.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, that's a great job. So we are now on break and so 6:20.
No way else.
Okay, it's 6:20. So we are back from break to the work session. The Stanton City Council and the next item is the Stanton Public, Stanton Public Library Annual Report 2021 through 2022. Just by regard.
Sarah Grubis, our library director is here to present her annual report.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for your time tonight as I provide the annual update covering our activities and services from fiscal year. Yay. All right. As you know, our operations have been severely disrupted due to the ongoing pandemic. And I wanted to start with this graph to show our trends since the pandemic began. The purple bars are fiscal year 20, which is when we abruptly closed in March because, because COVID. So we had an almost normal year that year. The teal bars are fiscal year 21, which is where we had the biggest impact of, the pandemic had the biggest impact on our operations. And the yellow is this fiscal, this past fiscal year 22. So you can see the trend lines. We've greatly rebounded and the statistics are improving since last year. So a little bit about our major accomplishments that we're proud of this year. We returned to our full operating schedule in August of 2021. We are the only local public library to resume our full pre-pandemic schedule. We're the only ones that open as early as nine and stay as, stay open as late as night. 12 hour days, four days a week. And we're the only ones who are open seven days per week for 68 hours of weekly service, September through May. We received roughly $23,000 in funding from an ARPA grant through the Library of Virginia. And we were able to completely replace our public computers with help of our wonderful IT department. This is critical for those members of our community who rely on the library's network and hardware to survive in an increasingly digital and online world. The new devices are great. They have touchscreen monitors to allow greater accessibility and navigability. I've had people tell me personally how much they love them and I've seen how much more user friendly they are. When I work with people one-on-one who don't even have basic mouse skills, it's so much easier to just be able to tap the screen. In April, we conducted a patron survey, survey and community needs assessment to inform a new long-range plan to guide us for the next five years. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. At the height of the COVID holiday surge last winter, we partnered with the Virginia Department of Health to give out over 1,400 COVID test kits between November and January. On top of all of our regular library operations as well. Our Library of Things collection increased to include two telescopes to encourage Emma's true stargazing. Besides the usual books and audio visual materials, we now circulate museum passes, state park passes, art prints, musical instruments, and those kinds of telescopes. Maybe not what you think of when you normally think of a public library. And with the support of the Friends of the Library and the Parks and Recreation Department, we were able to increase summer reading participation 138% over last year. The Friends gave financial support for prizes and other incentives and Parks and Rec was gracious enough to open up the pool for readers who completed some reading challenges. It was like an exclusive little party for them at the end of the season. So what does this all add up to? Patrons checked out over 200,000 items this year and that's just the number I can officially report to the state. We now have an automatic renewal system where it'll do just that. If no one's waiting for an item, your books or movies will automatically renew up to three times. We are not allowed to report those automatic renewals because the renewals or checkouts have to be human initiated, not machine initiated. But if you factor in those automatic renewals, you can see my little asterisk at the bottom, our number actually, our circulation number is actually almost 350,000 items. That's in a city of 25,000. So that's very heavy usage. Pre-pandemic and fiscal year 2019, our last kind of untouched year, we had, our circulation was around 360,000 items. So we're gaining on that. We're right back up almost where we used to be. We have rich diverse extensive collections with over 15,000 physical items last year. That's books, movies, audiobooks you pull off the shelf and check out. And anyone with a library card can browse 123,000 items in the building and they have access to over 1.2 million digital titles. So breaking down our circulation, again, you can see the increase of this past fiscal year over fiscal year 21 on display. What I found really interesting is that while our circulation activity grew around 50%, our, the number of overdue notices generated only rose 5%, which means automatic renewals and the fine free system are working. And I think that those are what you're seeing there, the only 5% growth in overdue notices is a result of less punitive policies that we enacted. The pie chart shows you what's being used the most. Adult materials make up about 50% of our total circulation. Children's and teen materials combined mean that youth is at about 35%. And we keep digital as its own category, that 18%, because we have several different platforms and they don't track things exactly the same way. It's hard to parse, you know, target audience. We just group those all together. So that's 18%, but digital circulation has increased nearly 40% since pre-pandemic years. In terms of people, I'm sad to say our door counter malfunctioned last year. So that number there is extrapolated based on six months worth of data. Between procurement, supply chain issues and coordinating with IT between our two department schedules, we didn't get the new one installed until a few months ago. So everything is based on July through December of 2025. I firmly believe that that severely undercounts what our foot traffic was last fiscal year because just anecdotally, we got busier as the year progressed and that wouldn't have accounted for that. The spring and summer were very busy compared to the previous fall. Our computer use grew once the new equipment was installed in April and April through June is one quarter of the year. But the usage statistics for the computers during that time period accounted for over a third of our total usage for the year. So people are really taking to those new devices. Curbside service continues. It's dropped off a little bit, but it still remains popular. And I think this is a service we're going to keep forever because it's convenient for people with mobility issues or parents with young children. It's just a very nice service to have. And I know there's still members of our community who are medically vulnerable or are being compromised. And curbside still lets them engage with the library and access our resources. So we're glad to do that for them. All in all, we have about 20,000 cardholders. That includes people from parts of Augusta County, all the way up through Harrisonburg. People who work in Stanton come to town for errands. So that's about where we're at. So who's using the library? I shared this information last year and it hasn't changed notably. But I think it bears repeating that a full 50% of library cardholders are under age 40. The single biggest demographic that we have is seniors 60 and up. That's 23% of our user base. Last fiscal year, we held over 650 virtual and in-person events that over 10,000 people attended. We did this by building partnerships, undertaking outreach in the community. You'll see me at the farmer's market on Saturday, the last one we're doing of the season. And we resumed hosting a lot more events at the library itself. Turning our attention to the Tophie Book Center, it celebrated 40 years of service this past fiscal year. And for anyone unfamiliar with the TBC, as we call it, it's a sub-regional library of the National Library Service for the Blind and Print Disabled. They send audio and braille materials through the mail to readers for free. And it's for anyone who can't use standard print who has a qualifying disability. The, the TBC is funded by separate 501(c)(3). So it does operate in our building and somewhat under our umbrella. The city of Stanton is the payroll agent for the employees. And they continue to serve disabled readers through Augusta, Bath, Highland and Brockridge counties and all the municipalities located within those boundaries. They circulated nearly 60,000 items to 324 patrons last year. A particular note that I wanted to point out is how they continue to be able to leverage these really vast federal resources on a very personalized local level. So this past year, the TBC was the first organization in Virginia to partner with the Bureau of Engraving and Printing to distribute idle readers, which is included on the screen there. As you probably realize, our paper currency has no tactile difference. So if you're blind, it's hard to determine if it's a $1 bill versus a $50 bill. So that is device. You insert the bill into it and it'll read off the denomination to you. Previously, there was an eight-week waiting period to receive one if someone from this area contacted the BEP. Now that the partnership has been established, you can call up the TBC and that device will go in the mail the next business day, by the next business day. So that just shows how responsive and important local services are. You know, those big federal and state organizations can't really do it at the same level they do. And our two employees are incredibly passionate and dedicated and great advocates for our local disabled readers. So going back to the strategic plan that we created, this is a plan that we did this past spring. It's intended to be our guided document for the next five years. It's a requirement to receive state aid to public libraries as well. We reviewed patron data. We got feedback from staff and the advisory board. And we looked at existing community needs and data. So we developed five areas of focus. Patron experience, community engagement, lifelong learning, the facility and staffing and work environment. I'm not going to read the descriptions or go through every single goal we have in our plan, but it is on our website if you want to see more. Our staff members are actively undertaking projects now to meet those goals. So we're really proud of what we're doing, but our work is not without challenges. We, like many businesses and organizations, have had staffing issues this year. COVID has had more of an impact on our staff this past fiscal year and this year than the previous two years combined. It came to the point where we had such staffing shortages, we even had to roll back to curbside only service in January because we weren't sure we'd be able to maintain enough people in the building to safely run it. We had nine positions turnover last fiscal year, including losing two professional librarians who had a combined experience of 23 years of service for Stanton Public Library. Since July 1st of 2022 now, we've already had seven positions turnover and it's, okay, we have an incredible team and I'm very proud of them. And we, they're fabulous people. But it is difficult to maintain consistency when we are constantly training new people and onboarding and orienting new employees. And it also makes it harder to pursue our larger initiatives because for some weeks, we're just trying to get through the weekly schedule unscathed. Nothing wrong with staffing is our communications issue. I was so jealous of everything Cheryl was saying during the tourism update about the marketing and PR. We don't have one person dedicated to PR on our staff. We don't have a position for that. We have five people doing it, including myself, and we're doing graphic design, social media updates, news releases. But I think it's pretty obvious that's not an efficient way to effectively communicate or manage all of those channels. And finally, our facility has become a major challenge. We have a roof leak that we're having trouble addressing despite some really great efforts from Public Works. The building is from 1917. The roof, I think, dates to the 1994 remodel. The picture on the slide shows the wet carpet that occurs on the ground floor after we get heavy rains because the foundation and drainage are becoming inadequate. And our staff have big dreams about what we'd like to offer the community in our building, but we're often met with obstacles when we try to undertake new services or initiatives. And a simple example from this past year is baby changing tables. We only have them on our ground floor bathrooms. That's where our children's department is located, but we know that families use the entire facility. We looked at every single option that's out there, wall mounted ones, but the metal studs will not support the weight of a table and a baby safely. Freestanding ones don't work with our bathroom layout because it will block access to the ones, the disability stuff. We looked at countertop models, but the countertops are not deep enough to accommodate the, the ones that you mount on the surface of the counter. So this happens a lot when we try to do things. We go in with the best intentions and then have to pull back our, our, but you know, we have to just pull back a little bit. Thank you. Ambition. Yes. Thank you, John. And we lately, I feel like I am having to tell our patrons no more than we used to because they're asking to use the facility in ways that we just simply can't accommodate. As you all know, Zoom has become a means of functioning for school, work, health. And we have a lot of people who want to come in and they ask if we have a private study room where they can use a computer so they can zoom. And we don't, we just don't have that space in our library, unfortunately. So I don't want to end on that negative note. So instead I'm going to end on something a bit more positive. Our annual operating budget is 1.2 million with about 200,000 of that coming from state aid to public libraries. If you look at just checkout, that 207,000 checkout number. Every time someone browses a book, a DVD and audiobook, think about how much that would cost you if you purchased that. Let's say $15, which I think is kind of a bargain sale price at this point. The return on investments on checkouts alone is $3 million. That doesn't take into account the professional assistance we're providing people one-on-one. The events they're attending for free, the databases and computers that people use. I think that's a very conservative estimate. And I may be a little biased, but I think it's an incredible amount of value that the Stanton Public Library returns to our community every year. So I'll conclude just by saying my deep thanks to the library staff. We're the heart of our department. We are also depend heavily on our community supporters like the Library Advisory Board, the Friends of the Library, Talking Books Center Board and the Stanton Library Foundation. And with that, I thank you for allowing me this time to share all this with you tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Download a digital book, you have to have a special app for that or couldn't you do it all?
Everything has a special app right now. We have, there are two major apps. One is called Libby. It's, it's an app put out by the company Overdrive. Some people may be more familiar with it with that name. And then there's also Hoopla and they are kind of competitors. They do similar things, but they offer access to different materials and different models of lending. So you can install those on a tablet or a phone. I mean, I commute every day, an hour round trip, and I'm always listening to audiobooks on my phone. I couldn't do it with a.
Especially if I'm going on a long trip.
Yes, and you know, subscriptions like Audible can get a little pricey. So our resources, you know, people are paying roughly $40 a year towards library services per capita. It's pretty much, it's a pretty big market.
Does any of that come back to you or is it all good?
That goes to the general fund. I mean, if you break it down, we don't get money from the patrons. So we provide that access for free. But if you break down the city budget per capita, it's about $40 per person for the library.
Money well spent.
I agree. Like I said, I might be biased.
When I retire, I'm going to come and volunteer. You can put me down in stack somewhere.
We always need help straightening and everything.
I love the love.
This is. Carolyn?
Yeah, this is Carolyn Dole. First of all, I don't know how many times I've said you rock, but you do. Our library is just the best that there is. My grandson really loved a program this summer. And I can't remember the name of it or anything now. But, but my daughter said that the library should try to hook up with the, the summer recreation program. I don't know if it's called Heart in the Summertime, but because whatever the program was, the kids absolutely loved it. Anyway, so just because you've got nothing else to do, I thought I'd pass that along. And I would certainly hope that within these ARPA funds and these fund balances we have, that we can fix your immediate problems. There's no, there's no reason not to. So I'm in, I'm in favor of adding those immediate needs on there.
Thank you, Steve.
I want to commend the Library Advisory Board. I'm council liaison and they really do a great job there. You know, as members of the nominated committee, we are aware that that is the number one advisory board as far as applicants go. And we got some wonderful people that are participating on that and taking their job very seriously. And they have, they're doing a wonderful job. So I want to really commend the work you're doing with the advisory board. Also want to bring up the fact that you can, you can borrow a musical instrument. I mean, not only telescopes, but you know, I think that's a great service that we're, we're offering and that's getting expanded. So you're doing a great job and thank you so much, sir.
Anyone else?
You guys do a phenomenal job. I agree, any immediate needs that you all have, we need to take a look into it because water damage in the basement is serious because then you have mold that will set in the books.
Yes.
And we do not want to lose any of our valuable reading material. But anyway, again, thank you for the service that you provide to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, so that takes us on to item five, which is a discussion of the 2023 legislative program. Ms. Bowerg.
Mr. John Blair is going to lead this item, but I also just realized and I apologize that the 2023 packet was posted online with, it's not the version with the notations. You all have paper copies of that in front of you.
In red, yes.
Ms. Dole and Ms. Biegh, I'm going to email you quickly the version with the notations so you can see the track changes of the 2023 legislative packet. That was what was supposed to be posted and I apologize, I didn't see that until right now.
Thanks, if you could just give us a minute here.
So I apologize for that, but every, you all have a paper copy in front of you, correct?
Yes, Mr. Kessinger made sure that we did. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're here at the work session. As you know, tonight, we will also have a public hearing on the legislative agenda. And one thing, it does seem in years past, and this Stanton is not the only locality I've worked in. Some people call it legislative program, some call it legislative agenda. I typically, the terms don't have any legal meaning. It just means really it's your, your desires that you're expressing to your legislators or your positions that you're expressing to your local legislators. But I wanted to talk about the process, which is I took last year's legislative program. And this is an accumulation through the years of council additions as well as staff additions. I went through it and looked at what the General Assembly did last year and tried to update this program before you. But I also want to note, we also reach out to regional entities as well concerning this program. And for instance, we reach out to the Detention Center, which I'll get to, the Regional Jail and the Community Services Board. And one thing you'll notice is I spoke to Colonel Young at the jail and he asked that we remove what we had in there from last year for the jail. You'll see that's been removed because in effect, he said those objectives have been achieved. You'll go through, and again, a lot of these things, there were a lot of requests for funding. The General Assembly last year, as you know, had an enormous surplus and did in fact fund a number of items. I did, for instance, some were taken out. The stormwater item, what for agriculture was fully funded by the General Assembly. But some of these items, you had to request a certain monetary amount. For instance, you'll look at section E. While the 10 million funding for multi-use trails provided by the General Assembly in 2021 is a good start. Well, in 2022, they increased funding, but I, I still, based on your desires, left in that council supports additional state and federal funding for trails. But again, most of this is just trying to update from what the General Assembly did last year. As well as you will look, section M. Our Valley CSP, I asked them to look at that section and provide their recommendations. And I made the changes consistent with what they requested. Section K, I do want to go back. There was a, a section or a passage there at the end that said, that wanted to include automatic registration of voters. You may be aware, same-day registration in Virginia is now in effect. So I felt like that was somewhat of an anachronism to take out. Now that same-day voter registration, meaning you can go to the polls on election day if you're not registered and registered to vote. That is now applicable in Virginia. Section P, first responders. Chief Garber typically updates this section. And that's based on his attendance at the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association. So he provided these updates. Section, there is a section V, that needs to just be deleted. You'll see that the text is, we'll take the headline out. But as you know, the General Assembly eliminated the state portion of the grocery tax last, or the food tax last year. So that was the request from the council. And I spoke with Councilor Darby and she asked that this be removed now from the agenda. Section Z is something that I am proposing. This is sort of a very technical amendment. And it relates to the fact, some folks aren't aware of this. But cities and counties, if they're, if an individual dies and nobody claims their remains, the city is responsible for providing cremation or burial services to that individual. And the city pays for that service. So this past year, and our office works with the Police Department on these cases. The state statute says that if a city or county provides these services, if there is an estate out of which funds can be taken, the city can request the court to reimburse the city or county that paid for the services. But we ran into a situation this past year where somebody didn't have an estate, but the facility they were in indicated that they had a bank account that transferred on death to someone. And the way the statute is currently written, it says an estate is where you can take these funds out of, not if they have an asset that's not part of an estate. So this request would be to change the code to say if you have a transferable asset on death, but you don't have an estate and a city or county pays for your burial or cremation, that the city or county could pursue those funds to reimburse for the burial or crematory expenses. And then you'll see section D, which are our opposition planks. Juvenile Detention Center. City Council poses any efforts to defund or consolidate the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center with another juvenile facility. Don't know how aware you all are, but there's a state senator out of Fairfax, State Senator Mardston. And he has, and he, you know, he has statistics that he thinks substantiate his claim. He thinks that there are too many juvenile detention centers in Virginia and that those should be consolidated. This request comes from the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center. That we would oppose efforts to defund or consolidate it with another facility. And again, that comes from Senator Mardston out of Fairfax is pursuing this and saying that there needs to be a consolidation of juvenile detention facilities at the state.
This is Carolyn Dole. Mr. Blair, do you know the occupancy rate at our Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Detention Center?
I do not. Ms. Bowergard said she may.
I just got something about our meeting next week. Let me look for that.
Historically, it, it was wildly overbuilt. It was built for way more kids. And I mean, the, the good news is we never filled it up with our local juveniles. But we've been putting in some of the federal illegal immigrants with behavioral issues and, and things like that to try to keep an occupancy rate up. So, so I'm curious why we wouldn't want to consolidate? Because then more localities would have to pay in to fund it, it seems to me.
I think putting children at far distances from their homes is, is not a very humane thing to do. And I think that children who are incarcerated should be as close as possible to their families. It puts a tremendous burden on families to have to travel to see children in detention centers.
Well, I don't know that anybody's talking about putting Northern Virginia kids here. But you know, for example, I have no clue, but if Almar County in Charlottesville had one that was underutilized, we could certainly close one of them. It's not that far away. So I mean, I'm just saying, we don't have any.
Other issue, the other issue though, too, is that it does put a burden on law enforcement as far as manpower issues for transportation, which affects localities when you have to go further distance. And plus then, you know, if you put kids that are from one area and you're, you're housing them where there's other, you know, more populated areas, the behaviors change. So that's something to consider as well.
Well, I just think before I would want to support that, we need to have more information. We need to know what their occupancy rate is, what the, the, the money we are spending to support that. You know, all of that information before we just go along with that statement.
Ms. Dole, I'll, I'll get, I don't have that information. I thought I did, but we'll pull that together.
I, I tell you what I'll do, I will, and again, this will come to you all for a vote. At your next meeting, November the 10th. I will take that provision out of the legislative program. And Ms. Bowergard will provide you the information. And then we can have a separate vote on that at the meeting as to whether to amend what's presented to include it or not.
Mr. Blair, I got concerns about the water quality issue. You have two different things here. On D, you have the Chesapeake Bay water quality with an increase in the Commonwealth. We're asking for an increase in funding from them.
Right.
And then, and W, you go back and you talk about, again, mentioning the Chesapeake Bay. I'm petrified by that report that came at the prior meeting. They were talking about $6 to $7 million worth of expenditures to be required here locally to, to meet Chesapeake Bay. And I, I don't think the city is in a position to fund that. And I would definitely say that if we're going to be mandated to make some dramatic change that we need statewide support on. And I, I don't know how to word it, but it seems to me that $50 million in mentioned in D needs to be included in the W. And we, we need to consolidate this and word it a little bit better so that we can, I would ask for better wording that we would require the state to fund it and not require the city to fund all this excessive demand. Can you do something else?
Is the rest of council okay with that, changing that verbiage to be more comprehensive?
I'm, I'm good with that. I'd like to make sure though, that we don't characterize the issue of cleaning up the Chesapeake Bay as being anything other than of the greatest importance to our, to our state. I mean, we rely tremendously, our fishing industry, oysters, crabs, they all rely on that bay. And if we, we have to move forward on, on cleaning it up. And so I, I, I don't want to characterize the expenses required to do that as being excessive.
Seventy fifty excessive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to say, we've been far ahead of other places in our area as far as implementing stormwater restoration things. So I think we, we're, we're a little bit ahead of everybody else, I have been. And also, you know, crab, being in the restaurant business, I buy a lot of seafood from Chesapeake Bay. There was a time where they were pretty much. Bay. There was a time where they were pretty much telling us, we weren't going to get oysters and crabs anymore. And the restoration that they've done so far has made a world of difference in, in the seafood from the bay.
Yes.
But it's taken years.
It has taken.
It's taken years.
Yeah, but you know, it didn't take, it took years to mess it up, you know?
So do it for the oysters.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
The crabs. Do the crabs. I don't like.
I like them both.
It'll be the special Saturday night, right?
Actually, they can't even get crab legs anymore.
Well, with that, unless there are any other comments on the provisions to the existing package, there were three items proposed by members of council to be considered. I, I think it'd be appropriate, I, I will read the item and then I will let the individual who proposed it talk more about it and then you all can give me some direction, however you choose, as to whether this should be listed in the agenda next week or not. First item came from Mayor Oaks. And it says, city council requests that the general assembly refrain from adopting special legislation which voids the results or time restraints of referendums. And that I will, if, Mary, if you wish to say anything.
The reason why I wanted that in there is the fact that the general assembly flipped it. We hoped Augusta County flip a referendum. Now that referendum is back on the ballot this November, even though its time limit had not expired. Of course, I'm speaking of the courthouse. It concerns me that the voice of the people could be overturned, flipped in the future if some politicians do not like the outcome of a referendum.
I agree.
I agree.
Well, I don't know, Counselors Mead and Dole, if you heard that, but it sounded like at least four members here would like to see that included in the packet in November.
Yes, I can count to four.
Okay. All right. And the next two items came from Counselor Mead, and again, I'll read them and let her talk about them. The first, the city of Stanton opposes any legislation which proposes new restrictions on women's reproductive rights or which authorizes state boards or commissions to adopt new regulations that restrict or diminish women's reproductive rights. And the second, Virginia's constitutional amendment that makes gay marriage illegal must be overturned. Repealing the language banning same-sex marriage would protect same-sex marriage rights at the state level if federal protections were to change. I'll turn that over to Counselor Mead.
Thank you. I'm not sure how much more I need to elaborate on either one of those. The governor has said that he'll sign any legislation that is put in front of him to restrict women's reproductive rights. And I, I, I don't think that's what the people of Stanton want. And so I, I think we should make sure that that, that is expressed adequately to our, our legislative representatives. The constitutional amendment that makes gay marriage illegal has not made it out of committee twice, for two years in a row, I think. And it's been held back by Republicans primarily. If the constitution, if the Supreme Court decides, as they did with Roe v. Wade, that, that it's up to the states, it would mean automatically that, that many of our dear friends would be put in a position of wondering whether their marriages are legal or not. And it would make it difficult for folks to bring folks back to the United States who, where, where they've been married legally in other places. So I think it's time we, we overturn this and repeal the constitutional amendment that makes gay marriage illegal.
You know, I agree on that.
Carolyn, do you have an opinion on it?
Well, can we count to four?
So I, I didn't hear.
I'm in favor of all of those. I mean, for example, you could argue that these are not local issues, but just the other night, I heard the fabulous New Jersey resident, Dr. Oz, who's running for Pennsylvania Senator, say that abortion decisions should be made by the woman, her doctor, and local political leaders. So I think we need to be very clear. We don't need to be involved in that and no one else should either.
So am I, am I hearing correctly that the four, that Mayor Oaks, Mr. Claffey, Mr. Robertson, and, and Ms. Darby are all opposed to supporting the repealing the constitutional amendment against gay marriage? Okay, so, so I, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing anything.
What were you saying in my mouth that I didn't say?
Well, who supports the, the items that Ms. Mead added? I, I'm, I'm in favor of them. I think Mr. Holmes said he was in favor.
Well, it's not a matter of not supporting it. It's a matter of not having the authority on these issues.
Oh, but you will. I just gave you the example.
But exactly. You said that we do not have the authority on those issues and we.
I didn't say that.
But you were talking about.
I did not say that.
Talking about Dr. Oz, which of course is not in this area.
But he, if he wins, he'll be a, a US Senator who would be in favor of having local political leaders. That is a quote, in, in charge of deciding who gets an abortion. That is an abomination to women's rights. And if we can't stand up for our local women, you know, what is wrong with us?
Carolyn, nobody's saying that we're not. Again, Dr. Oz is not in the state of Virginia. He is not on the Stanton City Council. And these are subject items that we have no authority on.
If you don't believe in these things, why don't you have guts enough to say it?
I'm not saying.
You're either for them or you're against them. You're either for these or against these. I'm not done talking.
All right.
If you're either for these or you're against these, and if you can't say one or the other, you're just full of crap. You know, you're such weakling that you can't, you know.
You are out of order. You are out of order. Take a breath.
I'm not out of order. I wasn't finished speaking.
No, you're calling us crap. So just take a breath.
No, I didn't call you crap. I said you're full of crap. So get it, get it correct.
All right, Carolyn, Carolyn.
No sweat off your ass.
We have no authority on these issues. We have no authority on these issues. I spoke to a gay couple today and asked if they would like for me to support this. And I was told we have no authority on this, that we need to focus on issues that affect Stanton like taxes.
And war.
I don't believe that.
Well, it's true.
So what authority do we have to ask the general assembly to refrain from adopting special legislation? I, I, I don't understand. I'm not following your logic, Andrea.
The logic is that we have no authority on these issues.
We have no authority on the issue you presented. We're asking our legislators.
Well, they, they receive special, they used, receive special permission by the general assembly. That's why it's on, the vote for the referendum is on the ballot this November by the citizens of Augusta County.
Both of these, both of these items have been approved by the Supreme Court. You know, it's been changed because of the makeup of the court, but these items were approved by the Supreme Court and have become law. How are you going to tell people who are married that are gay that they're not married anymore? How are they gonna, what kind of mess is that gonna make?
That, and that, I'm not saying I don't agree with that, that that is wrong. What I'm saying is we have no authority on it and we need to focus on issues that directly affect our citizens.
This, 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 this directly affects me.
Stand crossing, our water quality, all of that directly affects us.
This is Carolyn Dole. And what we're discussing right now is the legislative program. It is our request of what to support or not support from our state representatives. We are directly responsible for telling them whether our citizens should be discriminated against. And you can't say this is not our, this is our responsibility. And for you to say anything else, you just don't understand how government work.
We don't have the authority to do any of the things on this legislative agenda. We're asking our legislators to work on our behalf in Richmond.
Brenda Mead, that is incorrect. A lot of these items on here directly affect the city of Stanton. This is not something, this city council has the authority.
No, I, I think you're, what you're trying to do is avoid taking a position on something.
No, it's not a matter of avoiding taking a position. It's, it's.
Why, why did you ask, why did you ask a gay couple that you know whether you should support it or not?
It's you trying to get this council on record, each individual council member on record. This is a political move by you and I will not allow.
I'm not running for office, Andrea. I am not running for office.
You are trying, you are trying to get this council, individual council members on record. And what I'm telling you is, what I'm telling you is, we need to focus.
And you'll be on record next week when we.
I am speaking, Councilor Mead. I am speaking.
I'm gonna be talking over you as much as you're talking over me.
Okay, but from, from that, we're moving on. If that's the case.
May I say something?
Yes.
You know, I've been gay most of my life. I tried being straight and it's, it's hard for gay people, you know? It's just like, you're minority, even though you might look the same as everybody sitting around you. And, and we have fought so many years just to be accepted. And, and, and I mean, it, it, it's just so annoying to think that these rights could be tucked away just like snapping your finger. I have no, I have no.
Reach out to John Avoli, reach out to Emmett Hanger.
John Avoli, I've heard John Avoli use, I've heard John Avoli use that.
This council needs to focus on the local issues that we.
I think Terry should be allowed to finish his.
Brenda Mead, stop interrupting, stop interrupting. Ms. Mead, we need to focus on issues that we have the authority on. This is not a political tool, a gotcha moment against your fellow council members. This is serious.
Yes, it is, as a matter of fact.
This business, and we need to focus on what we have authority on.
We have authority.
Tell our legislators.
That's what this is all about.
Counselor Mead, stop. You're not recognized. Counselor Mead, you're not recognized. Mr. Holmes.
Every single item on this list.
Counselor Mead, you're not recognized.
Every single item in this legislative program affects, is about things that we can't do anything about without our legislators.
All right, Terry.
This is Carolyn Dole. Please let Mr. Holmes finish his comment.
I'm trying to have a conversation.
You were talking over him.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. However, that needs to be taken up with your state representatives. They're the ones with the power.
It starts on a local level.
We have no authority over this.
Well, then what the hell do we have authority of?
We have authority over taxes.
We should be looking out for our citizens. We should be looking out for our citizens.
Such as Stanton Crossing, the West End. That's what we have authority over.
That's not what we talk about in our legislative program. We don't talk about, we don't talk about standing crossing. We don't talk about the West End.
That we have no authority on these issues. Counselor Mead.
We certainly do.
Stop using this as a political gotcha moment.
We certainly do have authority. What, so why are we having?
Seven ten, we are moving on. We are moving on. It is seven ten. We are now moving on to roll call.
Of course we are.
Yes, because the clock says so and the agenda is seven eleven. So now we're overscheduled. So the next item is roll call and I'm going to read the mayor's roll call remarks. We are now at the portion of the agenda called roll call. Roll call allows each counselor member an opportunity to bring forth matters for staff follow-up, either during the same meeting or at a future work session or regular meeting, if additional time is required to respond to a counselor member's inquiry. All right. With that, I will start with Counselor Claffey. Do you have anything for roll call?
Ms. Beauregard, can we, where do we stand as far as space requirements for the various courts? Each individual court, how much physical space are we going to be required to provide in the event Augusta County pulls their judicial system to run?
We're gonna have, oh, Mr. pointing to himself.
Funny to anybody but.
Oh, everybody.
Well, I mean, and I don't need it now. I'm just saying maybe we want to have it by next meeting, you know, because I think by next meeting, it's gonna be more pertinent. But I think we need to get that information lined up.
Hi. It's kind of along the same line. Ms. Beauregard, in, in similar context, regards to the courthouse, can we be updated as to not only space requirements, if we need to have something established for Stanton, but possible locations?
I have to think of one right now. And that would be the old Grand Piano, right next door. Because we can utilize it partly for the police and, and solve maybe some of our storage problems, plus voter register. And it'll be, be easy to unload.
Plus, I think another thing we could do, we're gonna have to do something with this voter register. It's, they're out of space up here in the front of this building and we're gonna have to, I mean, we already had twelve hundred votes casted. And it's only gonna get bigger in future elections and you figure we got, we got a presidential coming up in two years. We're gonna need more room for that.
And that's about, while speaking of the voting register, when Ms. Goldsmith did come earlier this year, we talked about kind of having that resolved by the presidential election. And so we definitely need to step that up a little bit and try to figure out. I'll be, I'll reach out to Christie and.
Yeah, just work it in.
We'll work it in.
Need to move something else out to public works.
How we, well, yes, as far as J and D, have we come up with any, any possible spaces for J and D court? I know we're looking.
We can provide that information.
Okay. And then the second part of my question would be, I think you may have mentioned, but are we gonna get in the near future, some kind of update from our treasurer as far as delinquent?
Correct. So I did send an email out earlier this week. I did speak to Mr. Johnson. And he is able to provide that information and he will come back to council. Right now, I've totally scheduled it for the first meeting in January. Kind of let him get through the tax season, then he and I can talk again after that and put that information together. So we had a good discussion. So he'll be back at that January 12 meeting.
Okay, that sounds fun.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counsel Holmes?
I just would like to go back to what we were talking about earlier and the fact that we should be, we should put on record that we would support both the women's rights and gay marriage. I think that there's a law on the books now against gay marriage. If, if, if the, if the, the only reason it, it's not in effect is because the Supreme Court eroded that. And I, I, I think that's something for our people. And there's a lot of gay people in Stanton. And I mean, I don't know why, but it just seems like a gay Mecca, you know? And I mean, I, I, I think it's very important. It is no sweat off our butts to do this. And, and, and I don't understand why it can't be put in there, but for me, it's a very important thing. It might not be to you guys, but if you know anybody that's gay and you talk to them and they have a partner. It might not be to you guys, but if you know anybody that's gay and you talk to them and they have a partner, you know, it, it's, it was a big thing, it is, it's.
It is important to us, Terry, it is.
Well, I'm just saying, why is it so hard to put it in, in, on, on, on the docket? I don't understand, it's just, it's, it's a law that's on the books and I, I think it's important that we respond.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Councillor Mead?
I have nothing other than to, to, uh, say exactly what Terry Holmes just said.
Councillor Doll?
Yes, I would like, uh, Mr. Blair to explain to us all the purpose of the legislative program.
Well, let me, let me say this, uh, as you may know, Ms. Beauregard was handling this before me. And I, um, had received a couple of questions, so let me first say, uh, some localities don't have a legislative program. Um, the city of Waynesboro has not had one since two thousand and nine. Uh, the city of Harrisonburg had, does not have one. Um, a legislative program is effectively a governing body's request to the General Assembly, um, regarding its actions that it may take during the assembly year, during the assembly session. Now, saying that, um, you know, different localities do a lot of different things, like I said, some don't even have one. Um, some focus on one bill or two. Um, Albemarle County, for instance, I think has, I think five or six bills per year that they'll ask. They're usually very technical amendments. Um, some cities have much broader and take broader positions. It's up to the governing body and the, you know, as you know, you can pass a resolution requesting whatever, uh, legislation you wish, uh, you know, I believe this council before I came on board in twenty twenty-one passed a resolution about May elections. Um, versus November elections, but really it is, as a city, what you, as a city council, um, what you are requesting of your legislator. And I, obviously, I, I'm not gonna pick sides and say what should or shouldn't be done, that's not my role. But again, there are different philosophies, some places don't have one. Some like Albemarle focus on very technical bills that are fairly specific to issues related to that locality. Some localities have a much broader perspective and offer their perspectives on a number of issues.
But as a general definition, what is the purpose of the legislative program?
The, the purpose of the legislative program is for the council, again, if you have one, to communicate the council's positions on issues related to state legislation and again, that's where I stop and then there are different philosophies that each governing body takes. Some think it should just be related to very localized technical issues, others take a broader sweep.
But the, by the definition that you provided, those items Ms. Mead submitted should be included.
I think that's, again, Ms. Doll, that's up to you as a council. Um,
Mr. Blair, but they would be appropriate if they were supported by the majority of council.
Okay.
It would be inappropriate.
You've already had your time.
It would be inappropriate.
You've already had your time, Councillor Doll, please, no, no.
Blackface, hey, god damn it!
All right, whoa, watch your language, watch your language or you will be muted.
I am not going to allow you to overrule me constantly.
I am going to speak now because we're over time and it's my turn on roll call. Issues like Mr., um, Holmes brought up, such as gay marriage, women's rights are very, very important indeed. However, I will not let those issues be used as a political weapon against any council member because they are that important.
But why couldn't we just agree with it?
This work session is now adjourned. We will all track at seven thirty for the regular meeting.
This is.
I think you all are on record whether you agree or.
Yeah, I'll say.
This meeting is adjourned, no more discussion about business. We do not want.
I'm not talking about business right here.
We don't wanna have an illegal.
I'm, I'm not talking about business.
This is Kelly. No, not here. Go whenever, I'll just. It'd be late. Is it, it sounds like it's on.
Sounds like it's on, yeah.
Right. As Mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two regular meeting for the Stanton City Council to order at this time. Uh, the city council needs to take a five-minute break, so we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, I call the meeting back to order and the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to stand with me for the pledge, please do.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the invocation moment of silence and tonight Vice Mayor Robertson has the invocation.
I will be, uh, reading a Christian prayer, so if you'd like to participate and bow your head, please feel free. God of peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen.
Amen. All right, the next item is the mayor's report and I would like to state that under the mayor's report, um, I attended the Augusta Street United Methodist Church homecoming. They celebrate it one hundred and fifty-six years. Um, we also, as a council, recognize two individuals at the service. Um, Ms. Ophelia Keier turned ninety-two years old and she's been a member of the church, well, forever. And Ms. Margaret Morgan turned ninety-eight years old. So we recognize both ladies for their contributions to the city of Stanton and their dedication to Augusta Street United Methodist Church. And I'd like to commend Augusta Street United Methodist Church for everything that they have done for the city of Stanton for the past one hundred and fifty-six years. Absolutely. I attended the DEI Commission meeting last night. Uh, we had, uh, some wonderful guests, we had guests from the, um, Valley Community Service Board as well as Augusta Health and the, uh, state, state health department. Uh, Ms. Beauregard, you were at the meeting and, um, it was a very informative meeting. Thoroughly enjoyed it and that commission continues to work hard for the betterment of Stanton. Uh, the last item under the mayor's report, I just wanna remind everyone that, uh, Halloween is on Monday. So happy Halloween and, um, safety first, but have fun. All right, are there any additional items by members of council?
This is Brenda Mead.
Councillor Mead?
I have an item. Uh, I, two items in fact, I attended the public meeting for the bike, uh, bike pedestrian, actually for the proposed bike path on Churchville Avenue and it was really well attended, there were probably thirty people in the room um, who expressed interest in the path and interest in, in the way it's being designed. Um, and overall was very positive meeting. The second, except, the second item that I have is this. During the October thirteenth city council session, work session, Mark Robertson questioned my logic for not attending the work session in the caucus room. At that meeting, which was attended by thirty people, every seat in the room was taken and the meeting lasted for two hours, but he wondered if I had any scientific data to support my concern about adequate ventilation. He quoted the figure that only four people are currently hospitalized at Augusta Health, and maybe less now, I hope, I hope less. But he didn't say which variant, uh, infected those four people. He also didn't quote the figures on how many people in the Saw community or the Saw area are currently infected but don't require hospitalization. He didn't quote the figures on the cost of lost work and medical insurance claims due to COVID infection and treatment to the people of the Saw area. He didn't quote the figures on how many people are asymptomatic for COVID but can pass the infection to others. He didn't quote statistics on how many residents of the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro area received even one vaccination. He didn't quote any statistics on how many people in the area have received a COVID booster. He didn't question any occupant of, occupant of the room about their vaccination status. He didn't question any occupant of the room about any symptoms they might be having. He didn't ask any occupant of the room if they had been exposed to someone who has recently been diagnosed with COVID. He didn't ask for my age or the ages of the members of my household. He didn't ask me about underlying medical risk factors or the underlying medical risk factors of any member of my household. He didn't ask me whether members of my household have medical insurance or they, or if they do, what deductible they have and what they might be required to pay if they, if they need treatment for COVID. These days, when I go to a medical professional, I'm asked to wear a mask and social distance in the lobbies. I'm asked if I have symptoms or if I've been exposed to, um, if I've been exposed to, uh, anyone that has had, uh, as, that is currently have, uh, COVID symptoms. He didn't, uh, he didn't, it went, uh, I, I'm sorry, but this, this really, this really upset me. He claims that he works at Augusta Health and he's been vaccinated and boosted. Does he wear a mask every day to work? Still, I bet he does. He frequently reminds us that he's a healthcare professional, but it was he who stated in the spring of twenty twenty during a candidate forum and he might have been sitting right where he is now. He told everyone that COVID was just a bad cold. So when I'm going to a- assess the risk of infection from COVID in any gift, given situation for me personally, I'm certainly not going to seek the advice of a so-called medical professional like you. Thank you.
All right, are there any additional items by members of council?
Yes, this is Carolyn Doll. I would like for Ms. Mead to repeat the items that she wanted included in the legislative program. If she would.
Yes, just let me, let me scroll down to that. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not finding it, uh, Mr. Blair, would you mind?
Yes, in the earlier portion of the meeting, work session, there were three items proposed, one by Mayor Oaks and two by Ms. Mead. And the two by Ms. Mead read, "The city of Stanton opposes any legislation which poses new restrictions on women's reproductive rights or which authorizes state boards or commissions to adopt new regulations that restrict or diminish women's reproductive rights." And the second read, "Virginia's constitutional amendment that makes gay marriage illegal must be overturned." "Repealing the language banning same-sex marriage would protect same-sex marriage rights at the state level if federal protections were to change."
Thank you, uh, uh, I appreciate that because I wanted to make sure that, uh, the public was aware of these items that Ms. Mead had asked to be, uh, added to our legislative program. And I would encourage everyone, when either Ms. Darby, Ms. Oaks, Mr. Robertson or Mr. Claffey come into your restaurant or your place of business or as a neighbor, that you remind them that these items do re- relate and are important to the citizens of Stanton and that by including them in the legislative program, it is doing exactly what a legislative program should do and that's requesting your state representatives to, to, uh, support these items. And I would encourage you to have those four people fully informed of your opinions on this. Thanks.
All right, any additional items from, by members of council? Hearing none.
Mayor, I'm just gonna say that I'm in total agreement with both Brenda and, and Carolyn on this.
Okay, any additional items by members of council? All right, moving on to the approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special meeting of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Claffey.
I'm going to, we approve the minutes of the special meeting of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
A second is Terry Holmes.
All right, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. I'll also entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Madam Mayor. I'm going to, we approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Mayor Oaks, a second is Terry Holmes.
All right, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us on to the regular meeting. The first item is A, a public hearing of the twenty twenty-three legislative program. Ms. Beauregard?
Uh, Madam Mayor, the John Blair, our city attorney, will walk through this item before the public hearing begins.
Welcome, Mr. Blair.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Oaks. Um, you all may recall you had a work session in August to discuss the legislative program for twen- for the twenty twenty-three General Assembly Session. At that time, Councillor Mead requested that there be a public hearing on the proposed package. Uh, there have been, uh, I guess we've used Facebook as well as our email list as well as the city's webpage to advertise that there is a public hearing tonight. Um, during this public hearing, I will record anything that's not in the legislative package and write it down. And I, I assume that base, as this is coming in real time, I will record everything. We did receive some emails, uh, earlier this week. I will compile all of this into a list and email it out to council, uh, hopefully tomorrow and then if a majority of counselors email me about particular items and would like to see them included in the legislative package, I will then add it to the package and again, you vote on that package at your November the tenth meeting.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Blair? All right, so this is a public hearing, I'm going to read the public hearing guidelines. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand. limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during the council meeting for the other public hearings and matters from, of the public. And please keep your comment, your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing, so if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we'll alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. So I will hit the gavel, that'll open up the public hearing. You can come and speak. Again, we'll alternate between folks that are physically here and have their hands raised in Zoom. So with that, oh, and when I hit the gavel, that'll close the public hearing out, and with that, the public hearing is now open. Welcome, Mr. Fosse.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Patterson for his letter that he read just a few minutes ago. I hope they live by it. Of course, I'm not sure, but I hope that you people have integrity, not honesty, but integrity, knowing the difference between what's right, what's wrong, do the right thing. A while back, I asked a temporary manager for job specs for council people. I got twenty job specs or so, but they weren't the kind of job specs that I expected to hear from the town manager. What was missing was you were all elected by a group of people. And three other people were elected by the same people. You were elected primarily to provide government of the people, of the people, by the people, and for the people. And so what happens is four people dictate the dictations of the council. They're the ones who decide.
Mr. Fosse, do you want this added in as a legislative proposal?
Yes, absolutely. There should never be any three, four votes. It should, oh, if there's a problem, it should go back to work sessions and discuss it out and make compromises. That's the way it should be. That's democracy. I don't think four deciding whether or not the other three people who were elected by the same people that the four people were elected by, their vote shouldn't count. They're just sitting there like mummies, and they're not mummies. They're highly educated. Also, I wish to approve that, hope that you approve what Mrs. Mead said about women and about some of the other items. I can't, my memory flips in and out, but she's right. And you people have to make up your mind, one way or another. You have to start to have this integrity. You have to know the difference between what's right and what's wrong and do the right thing, which I don't think is happening quite often. You're making this into personal issues. Secondly, I see no reason why, when I go to the Augusta Health Department, that they suddenly don't want to hear my questions. I don't get answers from them. I honored to see the head of the Health Department because I have been stalked by a member of that health organization. Why? I don't know.
And you want that added in as a legislative proposal?
I want that added in too, and not only that, they have lied and they have deceived me and stalked me and gotten out of hand. The whole bunch of them should be thrown out. A number twenty years ago or so, I took them and I beat them badly, and the person who was in charge was told to either resign quietly or be fired. He resigned. And I get tired. I go through the channels to get things done properly, and it's not happening. I have a building, a piece of property over a domes crossing, which is over one and a half acres. It would had a building, but under the building, there was a coal storage area that the pump failed, and it filled up with water, and it destroyed the house. It was very dangerous condition. I had it knocked down. I go to the Health Department, and they tell me, oh, it's only zoned for a one-bedroom building, and it had in it three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a laundry room, a kitchen, and a living area. You people are spending over two hundred, almost $300,000 of your taxpayers' money, of taxpayers' money, supporting those criminals, and that's what they are. I have two papers. One doesn't say anything about zoning of a one-bedroom. Not only that, there is no such statements that was given to the Augusta County Planning Board, and this is in Augusta County. Why? And yet I have another statement that says, oh, it's the same type of paper that it's only zoned for one bedroom. Why? I can't understand that. They're just criminals, and they're out, and they haven't forgotten that I beat their pants off badly.
Mr. Fosse.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. You're good. Mr. Kessiker, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Caller, you may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Netch Narguzzi from South Jefferson Street, and I just wanted to make sure I understand what this, is this the public hearing on the legislative agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so, one, I would like for our representatives to fight for our rights for bodily autonomy. I think that it crosses party politics lines. Libertarians also want bodily autonomy and the government, government not making decisions for, for ourselves, so if you can put that in the agenda, that would be great. I would also like for the city to make a statement on protecting transgender rights and best practices on how to serve our youth and protect them in our school systems. So I think that that might be something that would cross party lines. And then also, I would like for our city to ask for our legislators at the state level and also at the federal level to ask for more funding for mental health resources, substance use resources, and very specifically, maybe some investigations into how you can serve the population that has methamphetamine substance abuse problems. Most of the criteria or the things that we can do for methamphetamine use is only fourteen percent successful. So when we're talking about rehabbing and serving our population, I think that at the federal level and the state level, we need a lot more freaking money and services and programs to investigate what we need here in the valley, and that is specifically housing, methamphetamine use, and all the other things that I mentioned before. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. Anyone from the audience?
I am Cindy Connors. I live at 106A Skyline Avenue. I have several things I'd like the city council to consider in legislative agenda. The first is on fair elections. I know that the state of Virginia has now legalized same-day registration, but I'd like to see that automatic registration put back into the legislative agenda because they're two different things. Same-day, you show up and you register on the same day. Automatic registration is if you have dealings with certain state agencies like the DMV, you can be automatically registered, and that was in the agenda, but was taken out in the 2023. I'd also like to see in that same section, furthering access to voting by mail and the ability to vote at any precinct within your location. So in Stanton, it would be you could vote at any of the wards rather than having to go to your ward on election day. The second is to remove the state's cap on school support staff funding. The third one is to repeal the right-to-work laws and past laws which make forming and joining a union fair and accessible. We talk all about, all the time here in this chamber about affordable housing and other things that affect working families. One of the best ways to help a working family is by having them have the voice in the workplace of living wage and living benefits. The next one is I support maintaining the legal right to a safe abortion and to birth control. Reproductive rights are human rights, period. They are health care rights. Only a person, their medical professional, should contribute to the decision-making regarding these rights. This health issue is reproductive health issue is no different than items such as B, J, M in the already printed proposed legislative agenda, and if you look at X on page eight of the proposed legislative agenda, number one, we, the city council supports cannabis legislation in order to provide safe and regulated access to Virginians. That's what I want to have, a safe and regulated access to abortion and birth control rights for all Virginians. The last is I support the repeal of all laws and constitutional provisions which limit marriage to the union of a man and a woman. All adult Stantonians and people in the United States should be free to marry the person they love and are committed to. And I heard earlier during the work session, Mayor Oaks said, "We need to focus on items which directly affect Stanton citizens." I passionately believe that the last, the things I just spoke about all directly affect Stantonian citizens. I know there's many same-sex couples here already in Stanton. They would be devastated if their marriage is overturned. We know in the future, there'll be others who want that right. We know there are children of same-sex parents who want their parents to be married. Those are Stantonians, and they are directly would be affected by those laws. I, I know many Stantonians that would be directly affected by the birth control and abortion laws. These are real humans that are affected by this in maybe a health care way, in a what family planning way, in all kinds of ways, which I'm sure you're all aware of. In fact, I think that Stantonians would be more directly affected by these issues than whether or not the state of Virginia can overturn referendum or not. So I'm very passionate about these things. I believe real Stantonians want these things in our legislative agenda. I believe passionately that you all have the right to deal with these issues, just like you have the right to deal with all the ones that are in your agenda already. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have their hand raised?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, caller, you may begin.
Hi, Yvonne Wilson, 2017 First Street. Just got off of work. I'm on my way down there, but I didn't realize it was a public comment. So a lot of the city council candidates, we've all talked about keeping national politics out of the city of Stanton, but I understand that there are some issues that cannot be avoided. So yes, if you believe in the Constitution, you either do or you don't. So one of the things that I would like to be part of the legislative package is, and you already know what I'm gonna say, it will be Second Amendment. One hundred percent. We are told that police are killing us in the streets. We are told that the government wants to put us back in change. We are told that we are oppressed as people of color and as women. If we want bodily autonomy for reproductive rights, then we should also have bodily autonomy to protect our reproductive rights. We have situations in this world right now where women are getting assaulted. We have women in situations right now that are dealing with domestic violence, mental illness, and it doesn't make sense to me that we cry out for a legislative package to protect our reproductive rights when we are going through situations where we can't even protect our own bodies from abuse. It makes no sense. If the city council has the power, or they don't have the power now, but if they are asking for that and they're able to get the power, then right up there with gay marriage, which I do agree with, again, you're either for the Constitution or you're not. For reproductive rights, I have my opinions on those. I don't agree with it, but I understand why some women do, why a lot of women do, and the situations that they go through. But right up there with that, we should also have a right to defend ourselves. We have a right to live, don't we? So please, city council, do me a solid and throw that in the legislative package because women have every right to fight back, just like any man. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Would anyone from the audience? Welcome.
Hi, how are you all? Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, hope you've had a halfway good night. I'm gonna introduce this resolution that I kind of left hanging last meeting. I would like the council to act on it. I would like the state government to act on it as well. It's about voting, and it's about, you know, the, our past history in the last couple years. I'll just read it. This is a resolution committing to core principles of democracy. Whereas Stanton City Council recognizes that the foundation of the United States of America rests firmly upon the principle of the rule of law, holding that all persons, institutions, and entities are equally protected by and accountable to the law, and whereas Stanton City Council holds that the peaceful transfer of power established during the inauguration of President Thomas Jefferson in 1801 after his defeat of John Adams and continued without exception for 220 years until the 2020 election is not merely a vulnerable tradition but paramount to the survival of democracy and the republic. And whereas Stanton City Council holds sacred its position as elected representatives of the people and its responsibility to respect the will of the voters and the majority who choose their representatives. Be it resolved that Stanton City Council, I'm sorry, be it resolved by Stanton City Council, that Stanton City Council solemnly commits to its constituents that it will recognize legitimacy of the duty and democratically elected officials of this jurisdiction, the state of Virginia and the United States of America, regardless of personal preference, and Stanton City Council will not tolerate attempts by any elected officials, candidates, special interest groups, or other actors to disregard the will of the voters and override the results of a free and fair election, and will use our platform to fiercely defend our Constitution and our democracy from unlawful insurrection. And the insurrection of 2020, January sixth, was right behind the American Civil War as far as a attack on our democracy. This country won't go along if we allow insurrections and, and many revolts around the country, and I will hope that, you know, you, y'all, you know, the Stanton City Council members will back this and put it forward to the citizens of Stanton, that we will have fair and safe and safe elections.
May I get your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dave Copper, Ridgeway Drive, the beautiful Skymont area of Stanton, Virginia.
Okay, and you would like this to be incorporated into the legislative program?
All the above.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Kessinger, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, would anyone else care to address the city council?
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. I'm Sheila Amadi. I live on College Circle in Stanton. I would like to give my support to the following 2023 legislative program. I am in agreement with city councilwoman Mead's recommendations regarding individual autonomy and personal human rights, the right of girls and women to be in control of their reproductive health and rights with no legislation that proposes any new restrictions on this or that authorize state boards or commissions to adopt new regulations that restrict or diminish women's reproductive rights. I'm also in agreement to overturning Virginia's constitutional amendment that makes same-sex marriages illegal. I am in agreement with strong advocacy from the General Assembly to federal government for more money and research for pediatric cancer, fully funding Virginia public education, and developing increased funding ratios to prepare our students now and in the future to work in a diverse, technology-driven, global economy. I support ongoing improvements to make I-81 safe, accessible, with reasonable free movement time after, with reasonable free movement time after an accident occurs on it. I also support increased money and program support to fight the opiate epidemic and drug problems in our area with local treatment and mental health services that are evidence-based, affordable, and easily accessible to community members. I support free and fair elections and announce blatant voter suppression activities that may be initiated here or anywhere else. I am in agreement to automatic voter registration. I support heightened economic development initiatives that develop higher-paying jobs for our community members to support themselves and their families and be able to have affordable housing to rent or buy. Good, available housing has become an exception rather than a reality locally as well as nationally. I will stop here. There are many other relevant issues to the growth and the viability of our state and city that needs attention.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Welcome.
Well, I'm Dr. Mary Miller. I live at 471 Albemarle Avenue in Stanton. I'll send you an email because I have a lot more written than I have time to say. First of all, I'd like to say that all, I'm a physician, all reproductive health care should be between a woman and her doctor. No one else has the expertise or personal relationship to interfere. The regulation of Viagra has not been legislated. Make it a right for people to marry the person of their choice and to be called by the pronouns they choose. Transgender children and young people have a high incidence of homelessness and suicide. Decisions for and about them should not be made by abusive parents. Make our schools places where everyone can be all they have the potential to be. Let students, teachers, administrators, and staff be supported financially, educationally, socially, emotionally, and be respected and rewarded for all they do. Our future will be brighter. As far as voting, I do not think we should have an election integrity unit. There should be automatic voter registration, should not decrease the time for early voting or the time to vote but for, by mail. All eligible citizens should be assisted in voting as needed. There should be same-day registration, no voter suppression, and establish a state holiday for voting. Too many of our children are shot to death. It's gotten to be so common, we hardly pay attention to it anymore. More guns kill more people. More suicides are with guns than any other method. Let's come with solutions that are not based on fear. Domestic violence is rampant. I just came from the vigil that they had at downtown here. And so many, I came from Aiken, South Carolina, and there was number one, the one year when I was there, for men killing women. So it's not just getting beaten up, but, and guns are the number one cause of that. I wonder if we can teach alternatives to conflict resolution, the true meaning of manhood, what makes a man, you know? And how can we teach compassion and empathy? Plastics are dumped into landfills. Plastics are dumped into landfills, as found by a recent study by Greenpeace. They cannot be recycled. They cannot be recycled, as the fossil fuel industry has misinformed the public for 30 years. There are at least two masses of plastic aggregations in the ocean, so they sort of congealed together. Each of those two is twice the size of Texas. Housing is that basic human need. Maslow taught us that. We need safety and we need security. We must find solutions. Transportation is needed by many. We must expand public transportation, but we can also promote carpooling, biking, and We could provide funds, education. Education is so important, people just, people just seem to be clueless. Education and innovative support to upgrade homes, school, and businesses to decrease energy and environmental costs and make people more comfortable. Stanton and the earth needs more trees. Volunteers for Shenandoah Green planted 2,746 trees in Stanton in 2021. That was one for each student in the school system. We have room for more.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Welcome.
Michelle Edwards, that's Michelle with one L, 112 Bell Creek Drive in Stanton. Good evening, council, madam mayor. I am standing in front of you, very tired and hungry. I had a banana for dinner, and I'm very, very uncomfortable with what I'm going to talk about, so I'm asking for some grace, please. In fact, I'm still a little bit shaking from the meeting, the work session meeting. Anyone who knows me knows well enough that I am very conflict averse. And yet, in any situation, you have to face conflict head-on, even if your heart is pounding and you're very uncomfortable. And I'm referring to the item that councilmember Mead wanted to put forth on the legislative agenda. I actually didn't know this was going to come up at the meeting this evening and was sort of, so I was sort of caught off guard. I wasn't, I was just very shocked at the lack of conversation. It's upsetting that our city council can't have a conversation about a difficult subject.
Ms. Edwards, do you want this as part of the legislative proposal?
Is this correct? I mean, am I, am I supporting this?
This is items that you want in the legislative?
Oh, I thought I could get up and, and talk about the item that was being proposed.
Yes, if you wanted in the legislative.
Yes, I would, that's what I'm doing, is I'm supporting that. So I, I just wanted to state my position that I am in support of gay marriage 100%. I am in support of women's reproductive rights 100%. I realize this is a difficult, difficult subject for many people. I'm sorry that it may divide Stanton greatly, and I, I hope that it doesn't, but I do hope that we can have conversations and exchange views about these things. I realize as a city council candidate that my saying, I support gay marriage and I support women's reproductive rights, that could cost me votes. And I realize that that's, that's the reality of, of our, of our city right now. But I feel very strongly about this. But I feel more strongly about being able to work together to do what's right for the city. And I truly hope that we can have these conversations so we can do what's right for all of our citizens. I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone have their hands raised, Mr. Kessinger?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, caller, go ahead.
This is Jack Curialason. I live at 241 Storm Rose Avenue in Stanton. I listened to the entire work session tonight, and I too am shaking with anger right now, so I will try to control myself. First, I want to say how honored I am to live in a city with citizens like councilwoman Mead, councillor Holmes, councilwoman Dole, Sheila Amadi, Dave, Cindy, Dr. Miller, and Michelle Edwards, who will speak up as opposed to hiding from issues. We moved to this city because we understood that this was a place where everyone was welcome. The fact that this council is too terrified to support what has already been settled law while they at the same time were eager as hell to hold public meetings about subverting state gun laws just has me furious. And I think, I, I didn't think I could get any angrier. So yes, I am completely in support of both proposals councilwoman Mead proposed to be on our legislative agenda. And as for the red herring that these are not local matters, I will point you again to the Second Amendment farce that was played out in this city in February 2020. This city needs to make a decision, and it would fascinate me to have an answer as to why an issue like gay marriage would terrify so many people in this city. As a straight person and a supporter of gay rights and gay marriage with gay friends all over this world, I feel like you're trying to take us back into the 18th century. This city needs to wake up. We are under attack here. We need to stand up for what's right, for what makes this city great, because if we lose our diversity and our welcoming of all people who can offer value to this city, then we're just another drive-through in the Shenandoah Valley. And if that's what you all want, then you should have the honesty to state it. Again, I'm fascinated at why people in power in this city might be terrified when the issue of gay marriage comes up. Thank you.
Does anyone else from the audience care to address the council?
My name is Brad Arrowood. I'm on Fillmore Street in Stanton. I fully support Brenda Mead's additions to the legislative agenda. I feel that it would take away nothing from the people who have issues with them, and I feel would better support all the citizens of Stanton for us to put that forward, the legislative agenda. So please consider doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, would anyone else from the audience? All right, hearing none? Welcome.
So I hope I can, I don't want to cry. My name is Linda Schalisch, on Spring Hill Road, and I was home listening to this work session, and I was going to just stay on Zoom, but I just couldn't stand it. I was just so overwhelmed by the level of rancor about the legislative agenda that Brenda Mead proposed. So I fully support gay marriage and women's reproductive rights. I also have another issue I would like to address about handicapped accessibility, which seems to be having a problem with that this week. So, and just now I parked in the parking lot, and the elevator was out of water, so I had to walk up the hill. So then I get downstairs into the lobby, and there's nobody there, and the elevator is, oh, sorry, is, is, this is disconnected. So I'm sitting there, there's nobody around, and I, I was like, what do I do now? So I said, well, I guess I have to go home. So I saw a phone on the wall, so I called the dispatch, and they sent somebody to unlock the elevator. So I think that handicapped accessibility should be part of the state agenda, legislative agenda, increase the handicapped accessibility. One of the other things is in the, is a bill, they want to change the word handicap to disabled, and I am, I support that. There's other things too, but those are the three main ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, would anyone else from the audience care to address the council? All right, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. I want everyone to understand that this was a public hearing. There has been no vote taken at this time, and that's why we want it to be able to offer the public hearing. So thank you for letting your voices be heard. And there are a lot of different issues listed in the legislative program, education, libraries, broadband expansion, so just to name a few. So anyway, with that, we will move on to item B, a consideration of amending, restating, and reordaining Chapter 3.35, transient occupancy tax of Title III Stanton City Code to conform with the Virginia, with the code of Virginia. Ms. Berygard?
Ms. Blair will also walk us through this item.
Welcome back, Mr. Blair.
Thank you much. Good evening, Mayor Oaks and council. For you tonight is what I would describe as technical amendment to the transit occupancy and transit occupancy tax. The amendment before you would allow for the commissioner of the revenue, as you may recall, back in September, you passed some amendments to the TOT that related to accommodations intermediaries. These are the web hosting sites such as Airbnb. This amendment before you would allow the commissioner of revenue to ask those intermediaries for the property addresses and gross receipts for the accommodations facilitated by the intermediary. That sounds like a bunch of legalese. What it really is, is the commissioner can ask Airbnb or a like service for the specific addresses and the taxes collected.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Blair? All right. So, Mr. Blair, we do not need to have a public hearing on this, do we?
No, ma'am.
Not listed?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to adopt the proposed amendments to Stanton City Code, Chapter 3.35, as presented. I move to adopt the proposed amendments to Stanton City Code, Chapter 3.35, as presented.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there?
No, ma'am, I'll second that.
All right, Councilor Claffey is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is item C, City Council to Consider Appointment and Employment of New City Manager. Bowe Regard.
I'll let John Blair walk through this one also.
All right, Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and council. Before you, you have a proposed contract and resolution which would name Leslie Bowergard as the Stanton City Manager. Some background. Before you, you have the proposed contract. As you know, there were closed meetings in which there were interviews of prospective candidates. There was also a review of applications. Based on the consensus that council reached in the closed meeting, you authorized the city attorney to negotiate terms with the city manager, with the prospective candidate, Ms. Bowergard. There was some negotiation. I did ask council about a couple, about a specific issue in particular. With consensus of council, I have prepared this contract for your consideration tonight. There's also a resolution appointing Ms. Bowergard as the city manager.
Are there any questions for Mr. Blair? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that City Council hereby appoint and employ Leslie Bowergard as the new city manager of the City of Stanton for an indefinite term to begin October 27, 2022, and that the mayor be authorized to execute the appointment, employment agreement as reviewed and discussed with such modifications and in final form as approved by the city attorney.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I will second that.
Councilor Amy Darby has second. Any further discussion?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dole.
Councilor Dole.
I just wanted to make a few comments at this point. I think, in my opinion, Leslie Bowergard was clearly the best candidate of the final applicants. And I think she's done a good job for us as an interim. However, I had requested a closed meeting to discuss the negotiations, which neither the city attorney or any council members had responded to. And so I don't agree with the final salary and benefits package, but I will be voting for her. It's just unfortunate that we don't communicate.
Are there any additional comments?
Mayor Oaks, I would just like to thank Leslie for stepping up when we really needed her. I mean, it wasn't just losing Mr. Rosenberg, but it was, you know, a lot of other people have left, and it's really, she's picked up the gauntlet and run with it, and I think she deserves to be our city manager.
Anyone else?
This is Brenda Mead.
Councilor Mead.
I'd like to also echo what Carolyn Dole and Carrie Holmes have said regarding Leslie's service in her position as interim city manager. The job was, wasn't, it wasn't a gimme. We received applications from nearly 75 people from all over the country and narrowed those down in a couple of iterations. And Ms. Bowergard shone through as the best person for the job. And so I'm going to be very pleased to support her.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I just want to point out that Ms. Bowergard will be our first woman's city manager ever in the city of Stanton, and she is most deserving. A wonderful candidate. She's done a wonderful job for the last year, and we really appreciate you taking over as our city manager.
Wait till the vote, wait till the vote, wait till the vote. No, 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 wait till the vote. It's out of words. I would like to say that, Ms. Bowe Regard Leslie, you have done a tremendous job stepping in as the interim city manager. We have had some other folks to leave to explore other job opportunities. And Carolyn, we did receive your email, but it was actually during the meeting itself, last, our last meeting. So that's why we didn't go into a closed session, because some of us didn't get the email until after the meeting. But.
We could have called another special closed meeting to discuss it between that two weeks ago and now.
Absolutely, you could have, absolutely. But either way, you have done a tremendous job, Leslie, and tonight, if the vote goes the way I hope it goes, you will see history in the making. We will have the first female city manager in the history of Stanton, Virginia. With that, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes. Just had to make it official. Mr. Fossa, during Matters from the Public.
Right now, my heartbeat. I just want to know, like, first, I want to thank City Council. I am so honored to be appointed as Stanton's first city manager, and I realize, I understand that it's, I believe there is history being made here as well. Not only are we the birthplace of the city manager form of government, which some of you may not know, but now we have the first female city manager. So I'm truly honored to have that be bestowed on me. I look forward to working with council with each of you to provide the highest quality leadership and service to the citizens and businesses of the City of Stanton. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm very excited. I just want to thank a few more people, so bear with me. I'd like to thank city staff. We have an amazing staff that are remarkable and brilliant people, and I'm so fortunate to have these amazing people work for the city. And I look forward to working with them as well as we serve the Stanton community. I do want to acknowledge a few individuals that have given me extra special support and assistance and guidance over the past nine months. I'll start with John Blair, who has been acting deputy city manager and also doing his regular job as city attorney. John Venn, because HR is so critically important to the city, and he's been by my side the entire time with his expertise and time. Jessie Moyer, who trusted my confidence in her to become our next CFO, which, of which I am so pleased. Chief Williams and Chief Garber for having my back and keeping our city safe and sound during a few trying events for the past few months. And I can't list every single department head. I wish I could. If I had all night, I could point to at least one example of their encouragement and support during this transition. I appreciate them all. And last but not least, Morgan Smith and Kylie Kessinger in the city manager's office, because they helped me do my job well. They make me look good, and I can't say enough about their help and support. So thank you, Morgan and Kylie. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the huge support of my family, because without them, I would not be standing here. My husband, Tom, my daughter Scholar, my son Thomas, and even my mother-in-law Stephanie, who's been so patient with me. I'm so grateful for their patience and confidence in me as a mother, wife, daughter-in-law, and now city manager. I can't do this without their help and support. And finally, I wish to thank a very special group of people. You folks out here. My family moved to Stanton in 2019, and right from the beginning, this community embraced and welcomed us. Stanton is truly made up of the nicest, most hardworking, friendly, supportive, and gracious people in Virginia. And I want the Stanton community to know this. I will work my hardest to preserve and enhance all things that make the City of Stanton a remarkable and special place, a place we truly love. Thank you again for this honor, and I am ready to get back to work. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to the next item, which is Matters from the interim. No more. Mark that out. Matters. Matters from the permanent city manager.
Right. I do have two items this evening, and Mayor Oaks, you did bring up Halloween earlier. And I would just like to remind people that Stanton doesn't have an official role in Halloween necessarily, nor do we coordinate Halloween observances. So talk to your neighbors. Halloween's on Monday night. You can also probably find out from your area neighborhood churches and neighborhoods that host their own activities. Stanton Parks and Recreation, though, is hosting a pumpkin float at Lake Tams from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. this Saturday, the 29th. The event will feature floating pumpkins, a costume contest, luminaries, and family activities. If you would like to reserve a pumpkin raft, I'd love to know what those look like. Call the Parks and Recreation Office at 540-332-3945. You can also register online at our website. And then the Stanton Downtown Development Association also has recently announced Fall Happenings in downtown Stanton. So they have lots going on as well. You can get more information at StantonDowntown.org for more information. And last but not least, on a sad note, this is the final weekend of shop and dine out in downtown. We've had another incredible season. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate this weekend, but get out there and enjoy one last weekend until next season. And that's all I have this evening.
Actually, this is a question for Ms. Mead. Yeah. Is Sherwood going to be doing the Halloween this year? Last year it was canceled. Just asking.
Well, folks are decorating, and I know, I bought 1,200 pieces of candy. I sure hope they show up on Monday, 31st. We celebrate Halloween on true Halloween day. I'm sure it happens.
All right, that's a lot of chocolate. I love it. All right, that takes us to Matters from the Public. Matters from the Public. This part of City Council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the City of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call. Identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. All right, with that, Matters from the Public is now open. Welcome back, Mr. Fossa.
My name is Mr. Fossa. I live at 401 Bowling Street, Stanton. I have a handicap, many handicaps. I have terrible legs. Sometimes I feel like pieces of stone. I have a head that was banged on the right, on pavement, on the front, on pavement, and on the left, on pavement. I have a shoulder that's dislocated. I have problems. I have a hearing problem, a terrible hearing problem, and people don't seem to understand it. But I can accept some of the stuff that people give to me. First of all, I want to congratulate Mrs. Bowergard. My pronunciation is terrible. I was one of the first first people many months ago who said that you should appoint her and stop running around and get her to be the county, the city manager. I've said that a long time ago. If I'm too loud, raise your hand. I'm tired of rebellious, and I've ruffled a lot of feathers over the days, but I get no reactions, and that's disturbing to me, and I think I deserve some reactions, okay? And that's a problem. I hope that Mrs. Bowergard will remember that her first job specifications are, one, take care of the people. Do something for them. Don't criticize them. Swallow the crow. Because you're going to have a lot of people who are going to take exceptions to what you say. And you should never yell at them. Okay? And I will speak to the clerk about that. I was going to blow it up, but I will not. Okay, I think she's your best candidate, and she can do a good job if she understands people. She will do a good job, and it's a commendation on your part. Okay? Secondly, about what I was speaking before, about this health department. They are out of order. There's no question about that. They are out of order. When they tell me that the person in charge there, the office manager tells me that the doctor is no longer available, and then I said, who is available? No response. Then they tell me, and I have to tell you, I never have enough time to say what I want to say, and it gets mixed up because I'm in and out with my thinking. And I apologize for that. And there's not much I can do about it. But when I have two now, two papers, one shows no response to a one-bedroom house, and the other one shows that a response to a one-bedroom house on over one and a half acres, and the house that was there was destroyed by a cold storage area, and I wanted to rebuild again, and they're telling me I can only put a one-bedroom house, one-bedroom house, one bathroom, one-bedroom house, when the septic system is the equal and better than the 100 other houses on this road. They tell me that, and they haven't forgotten that 20 years ago, I beat their pants off very badly. They haven't forgotten that. Okay? So, and they're coming up with that nonsense? It's way, way out of order. And when I went down and pick at the governor's office, the person down there in charge had the only one copy of where it said that it was zoned for one bedroom. Something is terribly wrong. There needs to be investigations of these people, of these people, and what they're doing. Okay? And there's not much I can do anymore. You walk in my shoes. I've gone through the channels, and I've never abused anybody, nor have I ever yelled at anybody that I'm aware of. And if all I had to do was just raise their hand and say, slow down. I've also spoken to the representative here, Mr. Volley, and all he gave me was a lot of nonsense. A lot of nonsense, support of people who don't need or should not get support.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fossa.
Mr. Fossa.
All right, Mr. Kessinger, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Would anyone else from the audience care to address the City Council?
Me Connors, again, 106A Skyline Avenue. At the work session today, the plastic bag tax was discussed, and I wanted to speak in support of Stanton instituting that here. I don't think the way the Virginia law is written is as good as it could be, and I wish it dealt with plastic bags at all stores, not just grocery stores and pharmacies, et cetera. But given that, I think we should do anything we can here to incentivize the limiting of using of plastic bags. And then we can have some revenue to use for education and supplying free bags to folks who may not be able to afford it. I'm not sure that we should tie that directly to curbside recycling funding. Not that I'm not the biggest proponent in this room about curbside recycling, because I am. But that tax is designed basically to eventually go away, the plastic bag tax. I think when we have our serious conversations about our curbside recycling, et cetera, we need to find permanent funding for that. And I wanted to bring up that question. I don't, we have this great big. And I wanted to bring up that question. I don't, we, we have this great big item cleanup day once a year in April. It's fantastic. I use it. My neighbors use it. But we've talked often here about what it would be like to, say, for example, help the West End. One of the things that I see happening in the West End is the amount of crazy items piling up in people's yards over time, and they may put them out in April, but then they accumulate over the year, and if perhaps if we had it, say, twice a year. And I also do, I do fall cleanup. I don't do spring cleanup. My mother did it in the spring, you know, that whole spring cleanup. I do it in the fall. It, I think that would be helpful for the citizens of Stanton. And the, the last thing, well, two more things. That big microburst that we had this summer, it went right through, we, as we all know, the Gypsy Hill Golf Course, and then right down my street, right through my yard. I am lucky enough to have the financial wherewithal to have cleaned that up in my yard, but not all my neighbors have. And since some of them had trees fall down and limbs fall down, et cetera, that didn't touch their house or damage their property, their insurance doesn't pay, and they don't have the $1,000 or whatever to take down broken trees, I would wish that the city council would think about what they could do to help the citizens, not just, you did a great job cleaning up the park, I have no complaint, you know, all that, but citizens need help too. I don't know if that's a public-private partnership or what, but there's still folks with damage from that storm in their yards. They could use some help. And the last thing is just a thought about all the discussions we've had throughout the work session and as the evening. I was sitting there reflecting, and you know, right over here on the corner, it's this beautiful mural we have, and it says, "You belong here." And I hope that that phrase on that mural will drive your decisions with our legislative agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, would anyone else from the audience care?
Hold, hold on, Dr. Miller.
We've got somebody.
There's one other lady coming.
Ms. Wilson?
Oh, okay, Dr. Miller.
Never mind, she said for you to go. Hot potato.
So you got my name, and I still live at 471 Albemarle Avenue. We talked about, I talked about plastics before, and in my opinion, a tax on a single-use plastic bags and containers is no deterrent to people with money. Plastic must be eliminated. Aluminum and paper well degrade. Of course, compost is best. And I say, people that can afford it. I mean, I'm one of those fortunate people that when I go to the grocery store, I can buy anything I want. It's not very common. Most people can't do that, so. I live three houses from Churchill Avenue, and there's competition on Churchill Avenue to see who has the loudest muffler. And I have no idea what they're trying to, to say. It's like they're trying to ground out everybody and everything. And then they come in the park, and they come with their trucks and their motorcycles, and you, you know, you can't enjoy walking, you can't enjoy cycling. As a matter of fact, I think that it, it makes a park more dangerous. I want to talk about, a little bit about the police. I went to the domestic violence vigil tonight, and there's a policeman who's on the board of domestic violence. So, you know, I think we need to recognize a lot of the people in our community that maybe are doing a lot of things that we didn't know about. We talk about, I've heard, talked about increasing diversity in the police department or the fire or whatever, and so you just put another black person in there. Well, I don't think that's really the way to do it. What I would suggest is to have maybe conversations, like monthly conversations with or without a facilitator, so people can really express their feelings. And when I used to have sessions when I taught school, I punished the kids and I'd lecture, but most of my classes were in circles. And what, what I asked was that anyone who chose to speak could speak. Anyone who spoke was listened to. And I think that's, that would be a good way to help people to talk about their issues with diversity. We had a disabled here lady here tonight. For the five years I've been in Stanton, I volunteered for Ride with Pride, which we take disabled people on horseback, and it's really a beautiful thing. But this morning, as I walked my dog on Lewis Street at the bus stop, there were two ladies talking to the air. One I hadn't seen before, one has been there many times. I think she sleeps a lot of times in that bus stop. She has her sleeping bag and her stuff. And she was yelling and, you know, really carrying on. So obviously, we're not taking care of the people in our community with mental health problems. I think there's a lot more we can do. You probably don't know, but I ride my bicycle five miles almost every day. I ve- I don't very often miss. I don't like the park because it's not safe for cycling, and cyclists come really fast when people are walking. So I don't really think it's a good, safe way to have. I have appreciated the, the path that's on Churchill, starting at Gruber, but actually, I ride out Shutter Mill Road to the bypass, and that's a very safe road, and a lot of cyclists ride out there. But you know, people don't know what it's like to ride a bicycle. People in car, I don't think anybody in a car knows where the right front fender is. I, I don't think they have a clue. And no car in Stanton has a turn signal. So I think if we educate people, I think we would educate people and help them. And you could start in school, because I see kids riding down the right, wrong side of the road, kids without helmets. I mean, drop a watermelon on the sidewalk and see what happens. That what's, that's what happens to your head when you, when you hit your head. It doesn't take much. So, and also, I think that cycling helps the small business. Obviously, I go to the bike shop, which is a great small business. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. And we have somebody approaching the podium. Welcome, Ms. Wilson.
Bonn Wilson, 2017 First Street. Um, I know that y'all heard my comments earlier about the, the legislative package, but I'm hearing a lot about this five-cent bag tax that everybody thinks is a good idea. But where I live on First and Gruber, a lot of people actually don't have transportation. They go to Dollar General to shop. They go to Food Lion to shop. They go to Beverly Street Convenience Store to shop. They go to Royal Gas Station to shop. These are people that already don't have transportation, but their legs, using either bikes or their feet or their skateboards. Most of the people are walking. Now, if you're doing grocery shopping, and you're trying to budget for your food for a month, I'm pretty sure that you come up with 10 to 15 bags per trip if you do one month's shopping. That five cents adds up. So are we really going to try and impose another tax on people who are already being taxed enough, one? And two, it's not really going to amount to much anyway towards recycling. Not yet. This is why infrastructure is very important, and why we need to focus on that. I don't agree with any more taxes, not in this economy, in any economy, but especially in this economy, because that breeds resentment. Oh, now we gotta pay another tax, and they don't care about the little people. People where I live already feel that they're being ignored. So why add one more thing? And it should be left up to the grocers to begin with. Let them decide. Because if they decide to do that, then the market will decide whether they stay in business or not. Or maybe they can come down on the recycling bags. Why not make those free? The ones with the handles that last forever, the expensive ones that everybody else who has money can buy? Those people that I see walking to the grocery store, they don't have that. So we're gonna tax them? I don't know. I think that's unethical. That's just my opinion, though. But anyway, I just wanted to speak on that. Also wanted to bring up that I saw a lot of people here that were at Stanton Pride this past weekend. It was wonderful. I was rainbowed out. Everybody was. Everybody had wonderful outfits and colors and candy and funnel cake, and I ruined my diet, but I'll do it for you, for the city of Stanton, not on mine. So, thank you, who, Stanton Pride, for putting that together. It was wonderful. It was great to see a lot of people out there that were in support. And like I said before, I do support gay marriage, because again, if you believe in the Constitution or you don't, it is life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. End of story. There should be no questions. So, with that being said, I will say good night and hope to see you at the polls on November 8th.
Thank you. All righty, Mr. Kessinger.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, caller. You may speak. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Caller, you may go ahead.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, this is Nich Narduzzi from South Jefferson Street. Now, I just wanted to maybe chime in on what Yvonne said about the disposable plastic bag tax. I actually agree with her in a lot of ways, and so I think maybe what you might not see in action is when nonprofits work with the population that she's talking about, that, that utilizes disposable plastic bags for a lot of things. They're really in, in creative in the ways that they use those plastic bags. But anyway, so the tax might not burden people that are, that qualify for food stamps and EBT cards, but I just wanted to let you know that there are a lot of nonprofits and people that are working with that population that uses those bags because they're most convenient. And literally, people, volunteers will collect additional plastic bags when they check out at the Dollar Store, the Family Dollar, Walmart, Kroger's, Martens. We will take extra plastic bags so that we can hoard them and then use them to distribute resources to a population that maybe you're not used to participating with. So I just wanted to support Yvonne in what, in what she was saying about that. And then I wanted to take the rest of my time to speak to the fact that I would really appreciate it if Stanton City Council would reach out to nonprofit organizations that are working to support populations that you're not necessarily comfortable engaging with. And these would be the people that, that need low-barrier access to cold-weather shelters here coming up, people that do not adhere, maybe to the stipulations that most of society want them to adhere to, but they are also our neighbors in need. And I would really appreciate if Stanton City Council and also staff, including the manager, would reach out to me to have a conversation about what I think is important for the city to focus on, even if I, I don't have valid opinions. I, I know that most of you don't think that I have valid opinions. I just wanna, in solidarity with Linda Schallisch, when she stood up, and someone from the disability community that would show up in person to speak, it's really hard for us to come to you because you are in a position of power. It's really hard for us to come to you with the emotions that we have, because we have lived experiences of people that don't have power. And so I would really, really, really like for you to maybe consider that you could reach out to us beyond your political leanings and relate to us based on the fact that we care about community, probably as much as or more than you do. And when I talk about community, I'm talking about the people that we relate to. So I know that you understand community based on the circles that you, based on the circles that that you participate in. But there are a lot of circles of community that you're not reaching, and those are the circles that I am exposed to. So please reach out to me, reach out to Linda Schallisch. Actually, Brenda Mead is pretty knowledgeable about those circles. Actually, Yvonne, Alice Woods, all of those people are working to serve those needs and communities. So thank you for your time and consideration tonight, and I hope that you hear what I have to say.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Dave Copper, where do I live? Ritzway Drive, the lovely area of Scottsdale. Procedurally, do I have to present this resolution specifically to council, or does that in the legislative?
We normally do not engage in conversation during this time period. I can discuss it after the meeting with you.
Okay.
We do have a copy of it that you gave to us, and it was submitted to all of us.
I thank you for taking those copies.
Absolutely.
I, I hold very dear to my heart recycling and as paper bag, plastic bag controversy. I, I specifically ask when I go to any, any store for a paperback, and if they have them, they usually are happy to comply with that. I think this, this thing with the plastic bags, I don't see why we couldn't at every council meeting, take a collection for plastic bags for people that prefer plastic, if it comes down to that. Of course, people need, you know, people that are gonna be affected by, you know, the, the amount of money it takes to get a plastic bag. I think there has to be a way. I, I have found this city is very giving, and maybe a canister in every store for contributions for plastic bags, something like that. I am a, I go to, to Gypsy Hill Park just about every day to walk my dog. And I don't know, some years ago, I had asked, I'd called the police and asked them why there weren't more speed limit signs in there. And, you know, lo and behold, there, there are four new ones that are a couple of years old now. There only used to be the one at the front and the one at the back entrance. And the disregard for the speed limits in there is amazing. I, I used to walk a lot as a postal worker, and, you know, judging speed isn't, isn't an accurate, you know, possibility. But man, when somebody's going 25, 30 miles, when you're supposed to be going 15, it's, it's noticed. And I, I don't understand why there isn't more of an enforcement. And I, I don't understand why there isn't more of an enforcement. I, I sometimes wonder, especially at events, you know, the weekly events in the summer, you know, the gospel music and the bluegrass and the jazz, why there isn't a police present, presence there while the event is going on. I was at the Gay Pride event this weekend, and there were, there were a number of officers on, on the ground. I thought, good, you know, this, you know, the way the oh, the area is with oh, you know, people, you know, radicalized in their you know, effort to stop people from doing things like being with a person of the same sex reproductive rights and whatnot. So I, I would like to see, you know, I, I know they used to have the bicycle guys out there on a regular basis, a daily basis, it was, you know, during the summer. And I thought that was effective. I don't know that they could catch speeders or not, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kessinger.
No, ma'am.
Anyone else? All right, with that, I call the October 27, 2022 Stanton City Council Regular Meeting adjourned.